As president until President Cindy Napolea Bella Reese is able to join us later in the meeting. It is a huge honor and pleasure to be here with all of you all today. And this is my first time on the dais, so I'm taking a moment of personal privilege to thank everybody to who helped make this happen. And to ask our community to please bear with us as we move forward in this new hybrid world. And so I am officially calling the meeting to order at six oh three P M. So let's do our pledge of allegiance. Dr. Johnson, would you please do the pledge of allegiance for us?
A point of order, I'm so sorry, we need to do roll call first.
My apologies. Thank you.
No problem.
We'll go ahead and call to order and we'll do a roll call.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper?
Present.
Trustee Withrow?
Here.
Trustee Jenkins?
Here.
Trustee Handy?
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
I'm present.
Trustee Bonian? Absent. Trustee Delphin Polk?
Here.
Trustee Napoleon Bella Reese? Absent. You have forms.
Thank you and thank you for bearing with us. We will go now to three point two pledge of allegiance, Dr. Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We will now go to, ah, roll call is three point three. Three point four, the affirmation of the statement of cooperation. So I will read it out now. Over the course of the last two years, we, the P C C D Board of Trustees, have been engaging in a process of reflection to improve our effectiveness as a board. As a result, we have conducted a critical review of our work over the last several years through a formal self-evaluation and established meaningful goals. The Peralta Board has adopted a statement of cooperation that codifies our commitment to set the bar for excellence in governance and community college leadership and to lead by example for our Peralta colleges. Full statement of cooperation is also available here. In summary, we have committed to, one, build trust and to understand each other. Two, to be prepared and to follow good government, governance and ethical protocols. And three, model the behavior we want others to exhibit. We therefore commit to honoring and upholding these commitments in words and in action. Okay, let's go ahead and move to three point five, report of action taken in closed session. I don't believe we have any thing to report out, but I could be wrong.
No ma'am.
Sasha, can you say that again?
No ma'am, no report out.
Okay, great. We will move to three point six, approval of the agenda. Chancellor, I believe there is a question. I believe there's a question on something to.
Yes, I was gonna ask if we could pull item five point one. Dr. McKinley is not here, he is on vacation and I just would like for him to be available in case there were any questions and to move this over to our next meeting, which would be April the twenty sixth.
Okay, so noted. Anything else colleagues?
Give me a second.
Second.
The motion by trustee Withrow, second by trustee Jenkins. Can we do a roll call please?
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphin Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bella Reese? Motion passes.
Great, thank you so much. Let's go to three point seven, approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Delphin Polk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you so much. We're moving on to three point eight, associated student government reports. Do we have any reports for this evening?
We have Harry Mapadila and he is with us as a panelist.
Fantastic. Go ahead, please.
Uh, yes, thank you, greetings, uh, all members of the board. And so, uh, I'll begin my report, uh, this Friday, uh, we'll be having a speaker at B C C. Uh, Dr. Rustic, um, who will be speaking, uh, on MRIs this Friday at nine thirty A M. And we have also another event hosted by the A P I movie, uh, A I P I club. It'll be a movie night, it'll be on April sixteenth from eight to ten P M. And the movie they'll be, be streaming is, uh, Turning Red and it'll be over Zoom. Um, and next is the graduation celebration. Um, so the A S B C has assisted to help the graduation celebration and funding tacos as well as a photo booth for this, uh, to help students, um, celebrate their graduation, even though to be fully online, this event will hopefully be a way for students to, uh, network and, uh, take pictures with their faculty, faculty members as well as with each other, um, in the photo booth and just to celebrate. And then, uh, elections have begun, student body elections have begun. They will be, uh, and they'll be concluding on April thirteenth, um, at eleven fifty-nine P M. And every vote counts, so I do, um, I do wish, uh, that every student, uh, try to participate as many as possible to vote. Um, especially considering that the A C Transit easy passes on the ballot as well. Um, so yes, every vote does matter. And, uh, the district, uh, distance education committee is looking for students to provide input on, um, proctoring software. And that, uh, Peralta will be concerned to use, um, uh, district wide. So we are, they are looking for, uh, student input, so please, any students that, uh, would like to provide, uh, input on a proctoring software, uh, to Peralta, please, uh, contact the district, uh, this, the district distance education committee. And previous, um, in previous events that we've hosted, um, and had, uh, at B C C, we had the annual career fair, which was organized by Christina Throwbridge and Veronica Montoya and their team. And I really thank them for, um, for all the efforts in organizing the student panel as well as the faculty panel and the attendance was, um, absolutely phenomenal. Um, so big thank, shout out and thanks to them. And to close my report, we've also, uh, funded therapy docs for finals week. And so there'll be more details on that, so, but there will be therapy docs on finals week at the atrium for B C students. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much, Terry. Do we have any other speakers Sasha?
That is all that we have for student. I believe that's all we have for student reports.
Okay, perfect. Um, three point nine, Peralta Classified Senate Report. Do we have Terrence Fisher?
Yes. Um, good evening, um, Vice President Delphin Polk, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, presidents and guests. Tonight we have just one classified senate campus report. The report comes from the Laney College Classified Senate. Renee Rivas' name has been submitted for the two thousand twenty-two Classified Employee of the Year Award by the Laney College Classified Senate. Renee was nominated because he exemplified professionalism in his role as admissions and record supervisor on all levels. The Renee Rivas renaming subcommittee, under the Classified Senate, is in the final stages of renaming the Laney Classified Lounge on the sixth floor of the tower building. Paperwork will be submitted by the end of the month. And finally, a fundraiser for a scholarship in Renee Rivas' honor will take place Tuesday, May sixth. Time to be announced at Capulo Cocina Mexicana restaurant located in Alameda at fifteen oh six Park Street. For information, please contact Hope Lane at H Lane at Peralta dot E D U. That is the end of the campus reports. Thank you very much for your continued support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
Thank you, Terrence. Let's move on to three point ten, District Academic Senate Report.
Good evening. Uh, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, presidents and all of the guests that are, I guess, there, the boardroom and online. Yeah, hearing different noises coming from some of the areas. Um, anyhow, um, we've just finished our state, uh, senate, uh, plenary, uh, this past weekend. And, uh, it too was a hybrid, uh, uh, session. And just seeing all of the difficulty that we've had to endure with that over the past two years of, uh, the A P folks, uh, really trying to get the likes right. Try to make sure that, uh, everything works, uh, well, all the time is, uh, is, is a fairly monumental, uh, chore. So my applause to the folks who are, uh, doing it. Well, we've had breakout rooms as well where you have to do it for both, uh, groups. And so it, it definitely becomes, uh, uh, much more difficult. I wanted to briefly, uh, talk about, uh, that, uh, the senate continues to be concerned about, uh, uh, the cuts that we've, uh, been experiencing. We've all submitted our, our schedules for, um, summer and fall. Uh, not much information has been, uh, disseminated with regards to the student survey that went out. So the portion of how many face-to-face or how many, uh, offerings in online or hybrid, uh, really wasn't, uh, explained clearly down to, uh, the chair level than the fact of some arbitrary number that, uh, folks were putting out there. Uh, but nothing really concrete, uh, dealt with in terms of data. And the students will really show what they really want, uh, come, uh, next month when they, uh, start signing up for classes. And, uh, later at the Bahador in June, when the rest of the, uh, student population could, uh, do it. So my hope is that, um, we go on data, uh, for these purposes. And certainly there are some, uh, classes and labs that are, uh, face-to-face and needed face-to-face. So I say this is because we're trying to figure out, look at our magic, uh, globe and trying to figure out, uh, what's the best, uh, mixture in order to attract the number of students that we want. My hope is that, uh, we continue to discuss this and that by next fall, we have some type of A P that clearly lays out how we calculate out, uh, our F T F, uh, for the following year. Uh, and so that way, uh, we all are participating in that discussion. Um, I wanted to speak briefly about, uh, our, my concern and the senate has taken a stance on what we call I D E A A, which is being inclusive of diversity, inclusion and equity, uh, and assess, uh, uh, access. And part of the concern has been that, uh, we need to diversify our faculty, our full-time faculty. And we continue to make efforts, but the efforts don't really produce what we really, uh, all want to see change. When you look at, uh, this past year where we hired seventeen, uh, new faculty at the various colleges, um, how diversified, uh, was that number? Uh, we are again looking at, uh, eleven hires, uh, for ideally this, uh, fall. Uh, but again, the difficulty of posting it for the number of days that you have to post it for, and then ultimately the committees, uh, and so forth. It looks like there'll be more work during the, uh, summer, uh, when, uh, faculty are typically off and not working. Uh, so that's another problem that I'm sure that P F T will point out. Uh, the concern is that, um, in two thousand nineteen, for example, we had, uh, fifty-nine, uh, full-time, uh, Asian, uh, faculty. And, uh, two thousand twenty-one, we're down to fifty-three. Uh, African Americans, uh, two thousand nineteen was seventy-three and we're down to sixty-one. Hispanics, uh, has increased from forty-three to forty-five. But as you can tell by these numbers, uh, we really don't do it. We talk, uh, we talk the talk, but we don't walk the walk. And the walk the walk is at the college level, at the level of selecting people, uh, to sit on these committees. On our selections of how we go about determining who we want to even get through the paper screening. Uh, and how we do that and then ultimately who we invite to the interview. And then whether or not in that interview, uh, candidates, are there enough diversity in that, uh, for it to proceed ahead? And that's where the manager, uh, makes a decision with H R. And how careful are people, uh, making those decisions? Uh, the interview questions themselves, how did we get to the diversity of experiences? And how they relate to the student population, uh, that we have here in Peralta? Uh, all of those things leading up to the final interview, uh, the presidents of the college might be very committed for diversity and inclusion. But if you don't have, uh, individuals move forward to the final that offer that diversity of three to five, uh, uh, potential, uh, applicants to interview, then ultimately you don't have the choices, uh, that you need to have. And, uh, I get concerned that we continue to do the same thing and somehow expect different outcomes. Uh, and I challenge the chancellor, the presidents, uh, the, uh, senate presidents, uh, the deans, everybody involved in hiring these new faculty to really, really critically look at the entire process from, uh, how do you go out and advertise, who do you go out to advertise to, what groups do you do? How do we go out and let part-timers know throughout the state that there are these positions? How do we know, how do we let, uh, different groups know in terms of ethnic group, uh, associations? Uh, any and all of those things, uh, need to be done because it will be very disappointing if we go through these, uh, hot, eleven hires. And we end up with probably wonderful people, which I have no doubt about, uh, who could probably even work with our population. But the diversity, uh, whether, uh, racial diversity or ethnic diversity isn't there. And if we want to really reach these students and really want to have the kind of student success that we need to have, we are looking for committed, active faculty who are going to engage with the students on all of these different areas. And so my challenge today is to say, we can't just have something on, um, you know, diversity, inclusion, equity and access on the paper for one question. We can't just simply, uh, say it in our interviewing, um, meetings as we develop the questions or, uh, do the advertisement. We can't just sit back and just assume that long as we can say it and put it out there somewhere that Peralta is looking for, uh, for people. Uh, it's, it's not going to work and our numbers aren't going to change. We're already well into the twenty-first century. We continue to have high numbers of black students, uh, Hispanic students, uh, Latino students and Asian students. Uh, but we again continue, uh, to have them reflected, uh, in our faculty. Uh, I think, you know, I'll quickly acknowledge that for administrators, we do a pretty decent job and not a great job, but we do a very good job. If we can do the same, uh, in terms of the percentages that administrators have, then our faculty rates would be very much different from what it is today. So I urge the chancellor, the presidents, the board of trustees to not just talk the talk, but to really walk the walk and critically look at our H R practices and processes and policies and to look at how we do these. And what are the inherent biases within those processes that really do not allow us to yield at the, at two thousand twenty-one? Um, you know, uh, more, uh, Latinx faculty or more African-American faculty or more Asian-American, uh, uh, faculty. So, uh, I want to leave you with that, uh, because we have not critically, as a district, really began to identify what are those biases and how can we change it? And yet we applaud ourselves for being in this very urban, very, uh, progressive, uh, area and yet we don't practice it. So I, I totally hope that as we go forward, that, uh, we begin to address these, uh, issues. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Um, next we're going to three point eleven, public communication. I believe we are allowing our speakers to speak for two minutes apiece.
That's right.
Thank you so much. Uh, Maisha and Sasha, go ahead, please.
Okay, and I will be moving over Kirsten Zazzal, um, Zazzal, I'm not sure if I am butchering your name, and Tracy Corbali first. Okay, Tracy Corbali is in the room. Looking for Kirsten now. Kirsten Zazzal is also in the room.
Go ahead.
Kirsten, you can go.
Hello, board members. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak tonight. There will be four of us speaking from Alameda Unified. Um, I'm gonna start first with some background about why we are here. Um, since two thousand four, A U S D and the College of Alameda have collaboratively and cooperatively supported the Alameda Science and Technology Institute on the Coa campus. Asti, as it is called for short, serves A U S D students in grade nine through twelve who want to participate in early college program, which allows students to take college classes that count both towards high school credit and college credit. Each year, a number of our graduates from Asti graduate with both a high school diploma and with an associate's degree. Um, in two thousand eighteen nineteen, A U S D and Coa began discussing the possibility of housing another A U S D high school program on the college's campus. That program, Island High School, is what is called a continuation high school. One of that supports students who, for a variety of reasons, may be in danger of not graduating from high school and have historically not found success in transitioning to the community college. Island High staff, um, had been using a Career Pathways Trust Grant to provide courses at Merritt, Laney and Coa to Island students since two thousand fifteen with the goal of helping students see, participate and succeed in a college experience early on. However, it was abundantly clear that a major barrier to Island students being able to take advantage of this opportunity was transportation to the physical campus. Beginning of two thousand eighteen nineteen, almost four years ago, A U S D and Coa began discussing the possibility of Island High School moving on to the Coa campus. This would entail moving Asti out of the Portables and into Building C and then setting Island High up in the vacant Port, Portables. Both A U S D and Coa staff clearly understood and articulated the fact.
Second, sorry?
The goal of this move would be to immerse ASTI students more into the college campus while bringing Island students onto the campus so they could enter college and career pathways prior to high school graduation. This was a pathway that COA itself mapped in May of two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, thank you, Kirsten. We're going to go to Tracy Corbali now.
Hi, I'm Tracy. I'm the principal at Alameda Science and Technology Institute on the College of Alameda campus, the dual enrollment institution. Uh, fast forward to the summer of two thousand twenty-one. Um, as planned for nearly four years, ASTI moved into COA's Building C and Island moved into the portables. But in August of two thousand twenty-one, just two days prior to our first day of school, Peralta informed us that ASTI needed to move back to the portables and that Island needed to leave the campus altogether. The reason was a, that Building C had a crack in a wall and needed to be demolished. Peralta has, as of yet, found no paperwork to document this claim, but insisted that ASTI move first to Building A and then to Building D, despite the flat fact that classes had started and this would create a clear disruption. Moreover, Peralta said, the original COA leaders with whom AUSD had planned this move, President Karas, interim president Don Miller, and interim president Nathaniel Jones, had no right to negotiate such matters. As such, years of planning, collaboration, and partnership between AUSD and ASTI and COA was dissolved in forty-eight hours under interim leadership. Here's where we are today. ASTI remains in Building D and Island is in the AUSD portables. Peralta leadership continues to say they do not want Island on the COA campus. The leadership has not given AUSD a reason for this, and we are frankly baffled. This year at Island, more than fifty percent of our students come from a home where the highest level of education achieved by a parent is a high school diploma or an attempted high school diploma. Eighty percent of our students identify as students of color and upwards of sixty percent of the student body are socio-economically disadvantaged. In other words, these are diverse and vulnerable students. Presumably, they are exactly the kinds of students that college
Sorry, ten seconds.
Peralta system at large are committed to supporting. COA's own mission statement, in fact, includes language about serving the educational needs of its diverse community by providing comprehensive and flexible programs and resources that empower students to achieve their goals.
Okay, I'm sorry.
By on the COA program is exactly the kind of empowering and flexible program that Peralta purports to support undone. Thank you.
Okay, go to Ben.
I'm sorry, can we ask that? It seems that these are written. Can they send that to us or can they make it available for us to read?
Be happy to.
Thank you.
So you can go now, Ben?
My name is Ben Woschowski. I am the principal for Island High School. I have the honor tonight of speaking, um, for my students. Uh, Island has been at COA for less than a year, but already the students understand and appreciate the opportunities this partnership has provided to them. One of my students, Tristan, for instance, writes, "I am currently attending Island High School. Ever since I was young, I've been told that kids should enjoy school, but that wasn't the case for me. I used to skip school and live life day by day. Coming to Island High has changed my focus for the better. The opportunity to enroll in a college course in conjunction with Island High has been a game changer for me. This spring semester, I'm currently taking Auto Tech twenty-one and Auto Tech twenty-two, which are the automotive technician classes. I've always had a passion for cars, and now I go to school to learn about them. My academic career has had an exponential growth ever since I've been attending Island High. I truly love the opportunity that has been provided to me, and I believe many others will benefit because this opportunity is available." Similarly, another of my students, DeNancy, wrote, "Island High has offered many great opportunities to build success for my future, and one of these opportunities is being enrolled in the college class, Intro to Psychology. It is a little bit of work trying to focus on two things at once, high school assignments and my college assignments. But having access to these college opportunities has made all of my effort worth it. The fact that I can take my college class in the same location as our Island High campus makes everything more simple and easily accessible. I'm happy that this opportunity was given to students here at Island High because I've been stressed about how I'm going to start college and where having the guidance and help from our wonderful staff here at Island and the College of Alameda has made my journey and experience very memorable. I am proud of how much I've achieved in such a short amount of time. I know that my hard work and dedication will pay off later in life, and I'm excited to see what my future holds. I am appreciative of this amazing opportunity. Again, I can't stress enough, these are the very students and kinds of programs that we would have thought Peralta would support." Thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, Ben. We have Jody McCarthy now.
Hi, my name is Jody McCarthy. I am the coordinator of Student Support Services at Alameda Unified, and I'm also a former Island counselor. Um, the proposed state budget that Governor Newsom released in January of this year calls for community colleges to establish middle or early high school programs, dual enrollment programs, other accelerated college credit opportunities, and programs to support unduplicated students at risk of dropping out of high school. At our last, uh, AUSD and Peralta joint subcommittee meeting on February tenth, Peralta and AUSD representatives discussed the continued need for a partnership as related specifically to that proposed budget item. We also requested that Peralta leadership reconsider its decision to force Island off COA's campus. Members in the meeting said that they would follow up right away with the request. Since then, we have emailed two times for an update, February twenty-eighth and March twenty-eighth, and have yet to receive a response. In addition, the AUSD board president had reached out to the board and asked for clarification as to why Island must relocate. She too has yet to receive a response. In the absence of any communication from Peralta, on March thirtieth, AUSD staff announced to Island faculty and students that they have to relocate next year. Understandably, the students felt defeated and confused as to why they were not welcome on campus, and our staff can't give a good explanation since we ourselves haven't received one. As it stands now, the AUSD portables that Island currently occupies will be empty next year. It's a fitting metaphor for the emptiness of Peralta's original promise to support our Island High students. As such, our final request to this board and Peralta leadership is that they inform the Island High community, students, and staff why they do not want our students on the campus. Alternatively, we would welcome some kind of communication outlining the appropriate next steps to continue our longstanding mutually beneficial partnership. Alameda Unified remains committed to that partnership, and we hope that you do as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Um, and I will apologize to everyone in advance for the need to, um, cut you off and give you the time. Sorry about that. Um, and I have Mark. Before I go to you, Mark, can we have everyone who was registered as an attendee who would like to speak for public comment, please raise your hand. Okay, you can go now, Mark. So you are muted. There you go.
Yeah. Thank you. Hi, I'd like to, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of my students. I teach at Laney College in the Electrical Electronics Program. I teach in a program that was designed by the Department of Industrial Relations, uh, in to create a parallel path to become a, uh, to obtain certification as an electrician, a licensed electrician, uh, a parallel path to what the IDW does. For most of my students, probably, probably seventy to eighty percent of my students, this unique opportunity is, is an oppor- is their first opportunity that they will have to create generational wealth for their families. That program is at risk, however, because there are not enough instructors being hired by the school to instruct my students. So right now, um, I'm teaching forty students in a, uh, in a class of commercial wiring. You cannot teach forty students in a lab situation safely because you're dealing with two hundred and eight volts, sharp tools, and power tools. And one person cannot supervise that many students. It is therefore, uh, that we've divided the class into two parts, and the students are now being denied the full lab that they were entitled to by enrolling in the program. Second point I wanted to make is that I'm holding up, and for everybody to see, you can see the thickness of it. This is the National Electrical Code. For those, for who English is a first language, it is a very complicated document to master. And I can only begin to imagine how difficult it must be for students who, for whom English is a, is a second language. Despite that, the college has been cutting ESL classes. It's not fair to my students. They need the ESL classes in order to succeed and create the second.
Ten seconds.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, you can go now, Giselle Georgie.
You said it perfectly. Thank you.
Great.
So I'm, uh, Giselle Georgie. I am an instructor at Merit College. I founded the Bioscience Department and still run parts of it. We have three, um, career ed programs and two in development that allow students to have access to well-paid, um, high satisfaction jobs in STEM fields such as biotech and clinical lab sciences. And I've been here seventeen years. Flies by. Um, I can't think of a year when, as a district, we've been honorable, reliable, and trustworthy about our schedule. Uh, we are always canceling classes at the last minute. We're not holding classes that students desperately need. And, um, it leads me to ask, why do we even have any students? How do they even trust us? And I would say that we have students because of amazing instructors, um, like Laney, uh, the speaker you just had from Laney, and because, uh, programs like mine allow you to have a high school degree, get some training, and step out of your three, uh, entry-level minimum wage jobs into forty-dollar-an-hour starting jobs. You know, become middle-class, build generational wealth, overcome systemic racism in a lot of cases, in some ways. Um, so we have phenomenal instructors. We have phenomenal program. We have good staff. We have administrators. Um, what happens when we cancel or don't offer a class? Best-case scenario, that student goes to Aloney or some other district where they tell you years ahead what the classes are going to be. That's the best-case scenario. And by the way, we don't lose just that student. We lose the whole community because we lose their friends, their coworkers, their family. Word gets out.
Ten seconds.
Okay, worst-case scenario, that student gives up forever. We have an incredible opportunity right now to grow, to build. The job market is amazing. We need to be growing and offering stable class. That's it. That's okay.
Thank you. Um, Andrew Park.
Hi, good evening. Uh, Maisha, we actually have a number of registered speakers who are at the PFT office currently. So I'll give you the list at the end, but, um, we have quite a few public comments that'll be taking place from this office.
Okay, but they're, they are registered by different names though, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll give you the list momentarily.
Okay.
Uh, good evening, board, administration, uh, faculty, students, community. Um, I want to point out to the folks from, um, Alameda Unified that we have that paperwork about the crack in Building C, so, uh, let us know. We can give that to you. And you'll be hearing more about some of those problems later on today from another faculty member, Katie Carmichael. Uh, I'd like to first welcome to the dais our newest trustees, Deanna Delphine Polk and Kevin Jakins. Welcome to Peralta in real life. Uh, and welcome back to everyone else. I thought everybody was going to be there, so that's what I had scripted. Um, we're sorry we're not able to be with you at the last meeting when the hybrid model was, uh, proposed and approved. We were really excited to be there with you in person. Um, but we found out Friday that we would not be allowed, uh, in the building to give public comment in person to you all. It's really unfortunate for us that the administration has decided to squander the opportunities that COVID really has presented in front of us. Staff at Laney have been forced to return in person, basically a hundred percent, even if that means that they're taking Zoom meetings in a noisy office. Classes are being scheduled in person, um, despite a paucity of students choosing that modality. Our campuses are less inviting than they were two years ago. Our students are less supported than they were two years ago, and the disconnect between all of us is greater than ever. And while faculty, staff, and students are told that they must return in person without any data to support that decision-making process, you all remain distanced, many of you in different states. We have several faculty here today in the PFT offices.
Sorry, ten seconds.
We're here together for pizza, beer, and camaraderie. We invite you to come over with us. Um, and now I'm going to go ahead and, Maisha, give you the list of folks that will be speaking from the PFT. They're really here. It's great. We miss you all. All right, so next up will be Anne McMurdo. Then we have Andrew Park, Jeff Sincere, Matthew Goldstein, Mary Virginia Watson, Janelle Tillotson, Rhonda Johnson, and Rose Allen, who will be ceding her time to Karen Panich, who will be, uh, zooming in from San Francisco. We also have some other faculty members here who just, I want to point them out so they can say hi. Um, we have Rich Kaiser, John Holmes, Alenny Gassis, and Fred Burgline. Did I miss anybody? All right, so without further ado, Anne McMurdo will take the stage.
Good evening, Chancellor, Board of Trustees, Peralta employees, and neighbors. My name is Anne McMurdo, and I'm a resident of Oakland. I've worked as a counselor at Laney College for over thirty years. I love my job and enjoy helping students achieve their educational and career goals. It's a joy to help many interesting and persistent students. Now, daily as a counselor, I meet students who have trouble viewing classes, enrolling in classes, and now finding classes they need in campus solutions. Our systems and processes are complicated, and now we are cutting more and more classes. If students are lucky enough to get into the system, now they are not likely to find the classes they need. Last week, I worked with a student for almost one hour to find one useful class that fits her schedule. She works locally in the mornings and wanted to take an afternoon face-to-face class on the Laney campus. She needs a math or English class towards her goal of an AA degree. Due in part to AB seven oh five, her schedule and class cuts, we couldn't find a single math or English class for her to take that re- that works towards her goal. Now she has basically changed her major and her goal to fit the classes that are currently being offered rather than to focus on the major and the degree that she wants. One of my greatest concerns is how cutting classes stops students from earning certificates and degrees, which impacts SCIF funding. As we go, as we move more and more towards outcome-based funding, we're in big financial trouble. In simple terms, I don't understand, when we're in full harmless, why we need to cut classes so students can't get the classes they need to get their certificates and degrees. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you, Board of Trustees and representatives. My name is Andrew Park, and I teach physics at College of Alameda. I'm here to share the impact of the decisions being made at the top level at the district that I hear from the, from my students. I teach physics for A this semester with the in-person lab. And I was grateful that it had enough students and ran as a schedule. It wasn't canceled. It wasn't late started. The students in class who were, they were more enthusiastic than I was in coming back in person. And at the first lab, and I asked them about if they were taking other classes in person, they talked about how the classes they signed up for were canceled or shifted online last minute and how deflating it was for them. We are now dealing with another decision made at the district, the top-down style. We are being asked to cut our class schedules to the point the core courses necessary for graduation and transfer are being cut. And, um, someone at the top decided that our number one goal is seventeen-point-five productivity, and that we can do it through cutting classes. And what if they are wrong? As we make these cuts, our students are being hurt, our part-time faculty are losing jobs. And when these decisions turn out to be wrong, bad strategic decisions, we see zero accountability for the decision-makers. We are here as a community institution, all these decisions being made as if we are a for-profit company. We know they haven't worked the way they were intended. When we cancel our low-enrolled, best thirteen classes, the district might save on faculty salary, but we also don't get to keep the students in those sections. Data shows that we lose one-third of the students right away. The other third have unsuccessful outcome.
Ten seconds.
What kind of experience are we living for the last third that somehow preserve here? Please make decisions that reflect that we are community colleges, and we should be here for community. Thank you. Please make decisions that reflect that we are community colleges, and we should be here for community. Thank you.
Look, I'll be doing my best to read partially a statement from Anthony Viejas, a CIS professor at COA, as well as, it's gonna be interspersed with a little bit of my comments. So this is gonna be a hybrid comment as well. Um, you know, one of the things that Anthony pointed out was the enrollment issues that COA is a ghost town. And this actually predates the pandemic, that we often don't have the resources we need, not just regular classroom resources, but also resources like fully functioning classrooms, sufficient classified staff for student support. And our classroom conditions and staffing issues would be obvious if the administration or the district actively sought out faculty input. Instead, we lack staff to support our students, lack faculty to support our students. And continually, in our classes, we continually have to try and cover for an administration that isn't giving the students what they need in classroom. District and administration are getting their advice, it seems, from the wrong people. Just a small amount of talking seriously and taking seriously faculty input would do wonders for our district. Otherwise, our campuses will cease to exist, and you'll have the most financially solvent district office in the state. That's it. That last part was me.
Thank you.
And remove my mask so I can speak more clearly and look slightly less like Dumbo. Thanks. I'm Matthew Goldstein. I teach Humanities at the College of Alameda, where I also have the honor of serving as the Academic Senate President. I'm here tonight to express concern about the district's approach to handling the decline in student enrollment. Over the last several years, the district has reacted to dropping the number of students by reducing the number of faculty allocated to the campuses, and as a result, classes have been cut. And you've heard from a number of my colleagues that that has not been an effective way to manage the declining enrollment. So far, in fact, the elimination of classes has only led to a steeper drop in enrollment. So it seems as though if this is an effort to improve productivity, it's backfiring. We've actually seen the productivity numbers go down over the last several years. I have problems with the notion of productivity, but I'll save that editorial for another evening. But back to the cuts. We've seen the expenditures on administration maintained over the years, even as the number of faculty has gone down and the number of sections has gone down. This seems to be a money-saving effort, but as others already pointed out, we're in hold harmless. So it's a little confusing as to why we're holding on to all this money when, again, students are failing to get the classes they need to complete programs and degrees. So what I'm calling for, and what a number of my faculty colleagues are calling for, is at a minimum, more deliberate and strategic approach to handling these enrollment declines. So we'd expect collegial consultation, of course, as required by law. We also think it would be good for morale and good for building better colleges. So thanks for your time, and I'll cede my seat in the PFT studios to the next panel member. Thanks.
Hi, my name is M V Watson. I'm gonna be reading a statement from a faculty member who couldn't make it tonight due to a scheduling conflict. Her name's Merrill Siegel, the English Department Chair at Laney College and author of a new book on community college composition. Here's her statement. "This is my second run as department chair, and my concern is we don't have enough classes or the right kinds of classes to accommodate students. The number of students going into first-year composition who need support has increased markedly because of the pandemic and the poorly conceived AB 705. Because Laney FTEFs have been cut so much, we can't offer our English support writing workshops that are open to the wider campus community. We also can't offer a selection of classes in the English major. In the fall, one of our signature classes, African-American literature authored by, or sorry, taught by the famous Judy Wanera, was cut because of low enrollments. We should not have such low enrollments. I have heard many students say how difficult it is to enroll and how long the wait time is to get assistance. I'm also concerned that classes just aren't being marketed and advertised. Please make sure that the classes are advertised appropriately, outreach is accelerated to our community, Laney English gets the classes it needs to increase excellence, and that students can more easily register for classes." Thank you.
Hello, Board of Trustees. I've prepared something to state. I just wanted to say that registration started yesterday, and I'm already seeing the impact to students regarding our class cuts. We are a valuable physical presence in the community that literally serves as a refuge from violence, housing insecurity, hunger, depression, and anxiety due to loss of loved ones. Our classes are the way that our students self-actualize and curate their own path out of poverty and change the trajectory of their family culture. When classes are cut, that can disrupt, defer, or even terminate the students' most valuable constructive and positive relationships. Our precious students, I don't care if this sounds cheesy, I believe every word. Our precious students, largely first-generation, college students, immigrant, Black, Brown, and Asian students, LGBTQ students, the most resilient and yet the ones that need a safe place where they can belong, flourish, and study, are disrespected by us. We disrespect them when we have inadequate staffing numbers for district and college admissions that rigorously and competently help students enroll, when there are problems with our technology like campus solutions, hindering our most tech-savvy of students. And then when we disrespect them, we cut classes that they struggle to register for and prevent them from finishing programs or gaining access to the classes and the faculty that they love. We are being held harmless. Why are we cutting our amazing classes? Where is the robust digital analog outreach and recruitment to our student communities to welcome students back? We were all devastated by the pandemic, and we need to be open, not just in person.
10 seconds.
Course offerings, well-staffed student services, up-to-date mobile-friendly technology over the course of several semesters while we encourage our beloved community to return to our campuses to remind them who we are and how we can help them.
Thank you, Janelle.
Good evening, Peralta community. My name is Rhonda Johnson. I'm a part-time faculty member at Berkeley City College. I'm the coordinator and counselor for the next program. I'm here to support my colleagues as well as our scholars. Just to note, again, as my other colleagues have, that the impact of cutting classes, especially when they're late cuts, affects our students negatively. It makes it difficult for them to transfer as they once planned to. It makes it difficult for them to move on in their careers. When students come to the counseling meetings with me, and we create a pathway, we create student educational plans in regards to what their interest in major is, they're really excited, and then when classes are cut, it just devastates them. Oftentimes, it just leaves them hanky. They don't know where to go next. They're not able to transfer when they were planning to or at all. And as a result, a lot of our students don't continue with school. And they certainly do not recommend our district to their friends and families who once were going to follow in their footsteps. And it's just disheartening, and I just believe that we need to make good on our promise to our community.
Apparently, they're muting our clapping, so, yes.
Come home, Maisha.
Sorry.
Maisha, so we're done with PFT. In the PFT offices, there are people here that are ceding time. And just so folks know, we really support this, and I'm sorry that we're being muted when we're clapping, so.
Okay, I will go to the, we have Liliana Moncada in the room now, and she's a panelist. You can go forth, Liliana.
Okay, thank you. Hello, members of the board. My name is Liliana Moncada. I am a counselor at Laney College. I'm an Oakland native, and I'm also a former Laney College student. Today, I'll be reading a statement from Trish Nelson, a tenured member of the English faculty at College of Alameda who cannot attend. "Good evening, Chancellor Jackson and members of the board. Title 5, Section 55061 states in part that an associate degree is supposed to leave students with a sufficient depth in some field of knowledge to contribute to lifetime interest. Class cuts cause us to miss this mark, hurt students and faculty, and constitute a broken promise to the community. Cuts are also a breach of PCCD Board Policy 1200, which requires us to provide equitable access to the educational resources, experiences, and lifelong opportunities to meet and exceed their goals. We have state funding, which is intended to keep us afloat during enrollment dips, and we should be leveraging this in favor of courses for students and employment for faculty. Anything less is a misuse of funds. Finally, enrollment mismanagement has been an ongoing issue at PCCD for my 20-plus years here. The consistent choice to cancel below an unreasonable number of students or prior to the first week of each term shows the administration is disconnected from, and our students lived, reality of situations in constant flux. Class cuts are out of line with the mission of PCCD, harm students and faculty, and are a betrayal of our own policy." Thank you.
Thank you. I have allowed Gabriel Martinez to speak. You can go forward now.
Hello, Board. Hello, Peralta community. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Gabriel Martinez. I am a counselor and outgoing department chair at Berkeley City College. I was also a part-timer in the past at Merritt College. I've been a student at all four campuses when I was younger, and I'm also a lifelong resident here in Oakland. Wanted to express some concerns about the district making cuts to course offerings and pushing resources into the wrong places when we are supposed to be held harmless, as other colleagues have mentioned. It's a chance for us to reengage our community, bring them back to campus. As we know, there are record numbers of people that are considering career changes at the moment. I also wanted to mention that class cuts are a direct attack on the most vulnerable students and the most vulnerable faculty members in our ranks. In particular, we know our part-timers rely, we rely on them so much to keep our district afloat. Our part-timers and our students are disproportionately impacted communities, potentially those who identify as women, people of color, adult learners, excuse me, who are 25 years and older, so non-traditional students. The cutting classes from future budgets puts us on an unsustainable path. We're gonna end up in a downward spiral, as we've seen in other local districts. It will not only generate, impact our funds generating enrollment, but also other portions of the student-centered funding formula, such as degree completion, certificate completion, and successful transfer to four-year colleges, which now are a portion of our budget. I've been told that 29% of the district's budget is going towards the district office. While we know other comparable districts fall within about the 10% to 15% range for similar services, so we are almost double other comparable districts. And at the same time, those campuses are supporting their campuses as good, or if not better than we are. So we need to focus our budget into more strategic areas. In particular, I would like to recommend for IT and certain admissions functions. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriel. Okay, we're gonna go to Kayla Lewis.
Good evening, Peralta community. My name is Kayla Lewis, and I'm a staff person at PFT. And I'm reading on behalf of Matthew Whitmire, a part-time instructor in the Merritt College Landscape Porticulture Department. He spoke at last month's meeting and described the uncertainty students are facing, not knowing if they will be able to complete the new certificate program that they spent the past two years developing for the cannabis porticulture employees. He wants to echo his colleagues' concerns about the arbitrary class cuts that will harm instructors, the community, and especially students. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're going to go to Noel Fagerhow?
Noel Fagerhow. Thanks, your first. Thank you this evening to everyone for having us share our comments. My name is Noel Fagerhow. I am an adjunct faculty at both Laney and Merritt in the English Departments. And I'm also a first-generation college graduate in my family and a former Laney student. And I want to speak to the class cuts issue. And even before the pandemic, and when I was a student myself, cutting classes before the first day of the semester is always a traumatic event for students. In the first two weeks of every semester, students are still shopping classes. They are still getting financial aid. They are still arranging with employees and family members how to get to campus, how to get their schedules completed. So I feel like our community of students needs a more trauma-informed approach, and the classes need to be available to them. We don't need to put more obstacles in their pathway. As many here have spoken this evening, one setback could mean they're done with their college career, for whatever reason. One other gentleman this evening, Mr. Moore, I believe, spoke about diversity in our faculty. We are growing potential faculty in our students, and we're doing them a disservice by not giving them the classes they need. So instead of reaching far and wide for diversity for faculty, new hires, we could be nurturing them right here in our student body. So I want us to all think about that as well. Like, are we doing for our students what they need to help them up into the next level? Thank you, of possibly giving back to this Peralta community as faculty members. So please do something about cutting classes before the first day of semester. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. We're gonna go to Marla Leach now. Hi, Marla. Go ahead.
Hello. I can't see myself, but okay.
Well, I tried to move you over. I tried to, and it said to allow the talk. Let's see if it works.
There we go. There we go.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay.
Does that just waste some of my time?
No, go ahead.
Okay, hello, everyone. I'm Marla Leach. I'm from the Media Department. I'm an instructor. Been an instructor at Laney for like 18 years, something like that. Before that, I was at City College for many years. And I'm speaking on the same thing. I have to say, it just feels like these cut, 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 it's all about numbers. It's not about people. It's not about humans. It's not about education. And we have a very small department already in media. We're CGE. When we get cut, it typically makes it so our students cannot get those certificates that we're trying to emphasize students getting. And it just seems like it's a no-win situation, and I saw City College do the same thing. You start cutting three weeks before a class starts, and then we can't offer classes beyond those ones that are filled, and we have immense problems getting students through our program. So guess what? They're gonna go somewhere else, of which there are many other media programs around the Bay Area. So why not go somewhere else? I certainly would as a student, and I went to community college also. So I really urge you to reconsider the way that the timing of cutting classes, the reason for cutting classes. We are in hold harmless. I don't understand the motivation for doing this unless you're actually trying to shrink some of the departments at Laney and almost eliminate them, because that's a little bit how it feels, to be perfectly honest. The other thing I do recommend is that every single person tries to register for a class at Peralta, because I've tried to add classes, and I just gave up, to be honest. I don't know why there's not a little button that just says, "Add a class." It is so simple to just do some, maybe it's not simple technologically speaking, but in many other colleges, it says, "Add a class, drop a class." For us to add a class, you have to watch a video before you can add a class, and even then, sometimes it doesn't work. So I urge you to make registrations so much easier and reconsider all this cutting. It doesn't make any sense.
Thank you, Marla. And now we're going to go to Tom Rinbarger.
Okay, thank you, everyone, Board of Trustees, college administrators, and district. college administrators, and district administrators that are present. My name is Tom Renbarger, and I am a physics and astronomy instructor at Merritt College, and I'm also the Academic Senate President at Merritt College. And I'm speaking in my capacity as Academic Senate President. One of the things that the Merritt College Academic Senate did was pass a resolution stating that we requested the college administration to give the same FTEF allotment for next year as they did last year. And the reasoning for that was as FTEF allotments have shrunk, productivity has not increased as a result. So cutting classes in order to increase productivity has not worked as a strategy, and therefore it is not a good enrollment management strategy. We actually passed two versions of this resolution. One in which, in, in the fall, in which we asked the administration, our college administration also, to add certain sections in certain disciplines based on historical enrollment trends. The administration did that, and I think overall, we've been pleased with the enrollment of the classes that the faculty asked to be added. So at the college level, there is some, there's some willingness of the administration to work with the faculty based on their requests, based on their knowledge of historical enrollment trends. But we acknowledge that at some level, they work under constraints that are set by the district for overall FTEF allotments. And the strategy is not working, right? We're in a very, it, it's a situation that's sort of been a one-time thing. And so we have this hold harmless funding that is to help us, you know, maintain our, maintain our course offerings during periods of lean enrollment. And that's not happening, and it's really at some level a misuse of, of funds to do that. And so I urge the district to reconsider their FTEF allotment schemes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Tom. We're gonna go to Adam, Adam Balog. Sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Balog, no problem.
Okay.
Hello, Board members and, and others. My name is Adam Balog. I'm the Chair of the Machine Technology Department at Laney College. I'd like to talk about the cuts. When I submitted our schedule for the fall, I was told that our FTEF would be reduced from three point five down to two point five. So we would be cut one whole full-time equivalent faculty, which is a nearly thirty percent cut. This is, of course, disastrous for our department and our students, but you may not be aware that it also does enormous harm to our local economy, specifically our local manufacturing industry. There is a surge in manufacturing in the Bay Area right now. I looked up the labor demand data for machinists, which is our primary occupational category, and the number of new job openings for machinists in the Bay Area per year on average is one thousand ninety-four. Those are not retirements, not companies poaching each other's employees. Those are new jobs being created. And this may be surprising to you, because California is an expensive place to do business, and other states are offering incentives that California really cannot offer. But the thing that's keeping manufacturers around is that California has historically had a very strong workforce. Most of the training for that workforce is done in career and technical education programs in the community college system, but we can't keep up. I looked up the labor supply data and the number of machining certificates and degrees granted by all of the Bay Area community colleges from San Jose to Santa Rosa combined is a hundred and ninety-one per year on average. That's, that's eighteen percent, eighteen percent of the demand. This skilled labor shortage is a huge problem for manufacturers, but instead of advancing the work done by our department to meet industry needs, we're getting cut back. But there's no fat to trim. We don't have any frivolous courses. Each one meets a specific recognized need. Every single course in our curriculum has to be approved by our industry advisory board, which has forty local companies represented. So we really need to be promoting and growing our CTE programs, not cutting them back.
Thank you. We now have Anne McCormick.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Anne McCormick. I'm an Oakland resident and part-time modern language instructor at BCC. I've been there almost fifteen years. And as an instructor, I put students first, and the administration says we should be putting students first. But when face-to-face classes were offered during the Omicron surge, students were not ready to come back to face-to-face classes. On top of it, the administration is using the numbers from this semester, those, that low number of students who chose face-to-face classes to determine what happens next semester, and that makes no sense. Ten to twenty percent of my classes have been made up of older adults who wholeheartedly support community colleges. They vote yes on bond measures to fund our colleges, but instead of using these funds to make the course offerings better and more inclusive, class cuts are hurting these various students and constitute a broken promise to the communities that PCCD is meant to serve. More class cuts mean that PCCD is not putting students first. How are we supposed to retain students when we do not meet their needs? The hold harmless funds are for this transitional time, so we can be more forgiving, try things out, have a greater margin for error. Please do not cut classes. Please help increase educational choices to reach more students. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. We're going to Mary Shaughnessy. Did I say that right? Oh, you're muted.
Mary Shaughnessy.
Shaughnessy, okay, you are up.
Thank you. Good evening, Chancellor Jackson, whom I know as Dr. J, and members of the board. My name is Mary Shaughnessy, and I am an EOPS counselor at the College of Alameda. I have the honor of serving students who are at the heart of our mission, low-income, mostly first-gen college students, and mostly, and almost entirely students of color. I case manage students, which means I have the privilege of serving students through their entire educational journey. When students first come to us, they need a lot of support, I mean, a lot of support in negotiating our very difficult, often labyrinthine registration system. Right now is priority registration. I am helping students sculpt a schedule that will work for them in their individual needs. Some need day face-to-face classes, some synchronous Zoom classes, some want only online full semester classes. Some need a mix of these things. It takes a long time to work with students to get them fully registered with a schedule that works. Students have unique needs, and their schedules need to reflect these unique needs. And then class cuts come. And it is like a wrecking ball that smashes through all the work we have done. I believe it is the assumption of the administration that when a class is canceled, the student will move to another section. But, and I want to underline this point, classes are not interchangeable. A student who has registered for a full semester hybrid face-to-face class with an instructor they have had before and have built a relationship with is not interchangeable with an eight-week fully online class. It's just not. There, when their original class is canceled, we have broken trust with that student, and we have jeopardized not only their enrollment, but their academic success. Another point I want that is often, to make that is often missed, students often don't know when their class is canceled. It is not, it's not my intention to disrespect the work of the dean's office, but I'm telling you on the ground that students are not getting the message, and they contact me thinking they did something wrong because their class is canceled. We are harming students, both of their academic success, we are harming the enrollment, and we are
Mary.
Our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mary. We're gonna go to Jay Miller now.
Hi, my name is Jay Miller, and I've been a Laney culinary arts instructor for sixteen years. The culinary program classes are sequential. We depend on large numbers of students to enter into the first semester lab classes, and through the normal process of attrition, we will lose a number of students by the time they get to their third and fourth semester lab classes in their second year. After COVID protocols took effect, we started face-to-face lab classes in the fall of 2020, limited to twelve students per classroom. If all twelve students from first semester were to move on, we cannot reach our new minimum numbers of twenty to twenty-four for a CTE lab class. The math does not add up. By canceling lab classes, students won't have a way to complete their labs in two years. They won't obtain certificates in their major. We'll lose faculty, who will lose their classes and livelihoods, and we'll lose our reputation for turning out students who are ready to enter the culinary industry. This does not jive with our stated desire to show our students compassion and empathy, or with anyone's claims that our students are our school's priority. I'm done.
Thank you, Jay. We're gonna go to Jennifer Fowler now.
Good evening. My name is Jen Fowler. I've been a communication faculty member at COA for fifteen years. I was born and raised in Alameda, a second-generation Alameda High School student, and quite frankly, floored to hear the testimony of our AUSD members. It's hopefully not too late to repair that critical partnership. I'm here to make a simple point. Small mistakes have big consequences, and right now, excruciatingly basic enrollment management mistakes are preventing us from gaining new students. Basic mistakes like Google Peralta Colleges and our old district website still comes up as the first search. Pull out your phone, try it right now. Basic mistakes like search for classes links on our webpage that require a campus solutions login and password. This does nothing for prospective new students that don't have a Peralta login. As a high school senior asked me last month, how can I decide if I even want to apply if I can't see what classes are available? Sure, there's a PDF of the schedule online, but even the website warns students they may be inaccurate as classes are canceled or changed. Basic mistakes like academic calendars not posted in alignment with enrollment dates, posted late, or posted with inaccurate dates altogether. Students have a right to this information and for it to be accurate upon enrollment. These are silly, sloppy mistakes that we should not be making. We're digitally slamming the door shut on new students before they fill out an application. I know these details seem small, but small details lead to a big impression. We owe it to our community to create a positive impression of our ability to serve students. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer. We're going to go to Chris Widenbach. Are you here with us? There you are.
Thank you so much. I'm here. I'm listening to every word. Trying to help cook dinner, too, but I'm so proud of my colleagues who've spoken tonight. I hope, I just, I guess I just want to say everything you heard from the counseling faculty, I hope you were listening with wide-open ears and open hearts. A lot of us who are lucky to teach, on campus especially, we get into impromptu conversations with students. We ask them how they're doing, and they tell us. They're very honest. Access, access is a huge issue for our students at Laney College, and I'm sure at the other three Peralta Colleges as well. Everything you heard people say tonight about when classes get canceled, I want you to also factor in when can't, when classes don't get offered in the first place. And when FTEF gets cut as ridiculously heavily as it's been cut in this planning cycle to get ready for summer and fall, we're cutting out access. We're cutting out access for students who don't have the liberty of taking any old class, any old time. Our students are strapped. They're taking care of family members. They're taking care of their elders. They're taking care of their siblings. They're taking care of business. They're trying to get to work. They need access. They need as many choices as we can give them, and we owe that to them. We owe that to this community.
Sorry, ten seconds.
I'm gonna trust that we can straighten this out and restore FTEF to the proper levels that it needs to be at as we come out of the pandemic, and tons of people in our service area are looking for us, looking to us to do our service to them. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you, Chris. Next, we have Amit Singh.
Good evening. My name is Amit Singh. I'm a faculty member in the mathematics department, part-time faculty member at Laney College. I also teach at three, two other districts, so I'm a freeway flyer, as we say. So I have many of the same concerns that we've heard from the other part-time instructors this evening. So I really enjoy teaching my students, and I'm passionate about my job. And these cuts have been devastating to the math department at Laney, as well as some other places I teach at, specifically Laney. So a lot of my coworkers and a lot of my fellow math instructors are also facing cuts and have have low-enrolled classes, so their classes were canceled this semester as well. I'm lucky my class didn't get canceled. I only have twelve students, but the dean was nice enough to not cancel it, for whatever reason. Usually that class has forty people in it. It's a statistics class. So this leads me to the transfer-level courses. This is a transfer-level course, and there's this bill, AB seven oh five, that's getting rid of a lot of remedial, getting rid of most remedial classes. And so they're trying to get students to transfer faster. So if we cut more classes, that's gonna impact students' ability to enroll in classes, and this is like climbing a ladder. You can't take calculus unless you know your algebra, so this impacts the students negatively when classes are canceled. They may, may not want to come back. They might go to another district, as we've heard, to take these classes, but they prefer to do it in Peralta, because this is where they're, they're most comfortable. So I ask that the board members maybe
Ten seconds.
consult with the faculty before they make these big decisions, so you can encourage more students to, you know, remain. Thank you.
Thank you, Amit. Next, we have is Lowell Bennett.
Thank you, and thank you, trustees, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm now a student and faculty senator at Merritt College after retiring after a twenty-six-year career as a managing director and global investment strategist. And I'd like to briefly apply some of what I've learned in my finance, education, and business career to our class-cutting situation. We, Peralta, are letting the deeply flawed concept of productivity drive our decision-making process related to cutting classes. We are cutting or not offering what I would call economically viable classes, classes where the marginal revenue exceeds the marginal cost. Cutting our course offerings of these economically viable classes is like a business that is closing profitable stores and sending its customers away. Those customers are our students who can't get the classes they need, and we keep doing it year after year in search of productivity. The problem with productivity is that it not only measures the cla, that it only measures the classes that are ultimately kept. The productivity measure ignores those economically viable classes that are cut or not even offered in the first place. Productivity ignores the negative impact on overall enrollment, and most importantly, it ignores the impact on our students from eliminating those classes. In short, the drive for productivity is a key part of the downward enrollment and financial spiral we find ourselves in. Let's add back the economically viable classes our students need while we have the hold harmless funds to do it. Time is of the essence. I endorse the process President Moore outlined going forward, but let's not wait another year to offer the classes that students need now.
Ten seconds.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Lowell. We'll go to Michael Lynn now.
Hi, good evening, Board members, administrators, and the Peralta community. I just want to speak briefly about the class cuts. As a former political science and social science instructor at BCC, I've seen the effects of the cuts on our students and also on part-time faculty members who are the most vulnerable in our community. I had a colleague, actually, when I first started about six years ago, who was relying on, you know, this paycheck to be able to support himself. And, you know, as his courses were cut, he resorted to having to sleep in his car, okay? So it's something that we don't talk about with faculty members, with the kind of hardships that they deal with. And I think, you know, I would be in the same situation or in a similar situation, where not for the support that I receive from people around me. We all do this because, you know, we love teaching and because we want to support our students, and also because we live in this community. We're a part of this community, and we believe, you know, the mandate of community colleges to serve their community, right? It's sad when I see students within our Peralta community who may not be able to get the classes they need. who may not be able to get the classes they need and may not be able to graduate, you know, and get the certificates that they need. And they end up having to either drop out or to go to other districts, right? To go to Contra Costa up north, or to go to Chabot or Las Pacitas in the south to take classes that they need, right? These are our students, and we should be serving them. We should not, you know, cut courses and force them to seek other options. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We are now going to OJ Roundtree.
My name is OJ Roundtree. I am the Department Chair and Senior Faculty Member of the Apparel Design and Merchandising Program at the College of Alameda. As a product of the ADAM program and during my 30 years at the college, I can truly testify how important it is to maintain and offer as many courses, programs, and disciplines as possible to the community we serve. With support from my colleagues or courses, programs, and disciplines, I respectfully address this Peralta Administration and the Board. For years, we have taken the antiquated approach of viewing students and faculty through the lenses of what is known as bottom-line productivity. This one-shoe, one-size business approach doesn't work effectively in an educational environment. Education is not a corporate business. Students, faculty, programs, disciplines, and courses are personal entities and should not be numbers on a spreadsheet. You should not treat us like inventory that is expendable in two years. We have family, friends, and loved ones who remember our experiences while on campus. ADAM was on the cutting block for three of its courses, which would have adversely affected students by disrupting their two-year goal of attaining a certificate of achievement and/or their AA degree. It would have sent the ADAM program on a path of dismantlement and further declaimment in enrollment. If administration can be patient and work with faculty for one year, a better solution might be revising curriculum and combining repeating courses, thus reducing FTEF rather than taking this straight-across-the-board hatchet approach. By taking this suggested approach, by taking this approach, ADAM can take its current negative FTEF to an acceptable positive FTEF by Fall 2023 with curriculum approval. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. Now, we're going to Katie Carmichael.
Good evening, Peralta community. My name is Katie Carmichael. I teach Geography at College of Alameda. From the faculty perspective, I can tell you that we are frustrated, if that wasn't obvious already. Our frustration stems from what I perceive is a lack of communication and inclusive planning on the part of administration, which is ultimately hurting our enrollment and our students. To give you an example, as the co-chair of the Physical Science Cluster, I am dealing with our ongoing facility crisis. Our science classes have moved entirely online or off-site to the swing space at 860 Atlantic Avenue. Aside from a few hybrid anthropology courses, we do not offer any physical science labs or classes at our COA campus. I myself was one of the faculty removed from their office and their designated classroom space, which I had utilized since my arrival in 2016, just last semester without any consultation or notice. In fact, I informed the administration that my classroom was one of the ones being removed from use. The reasoning behind this, well, there's never been any official announcement or discussion, but it's a fun mixture ranging from alarming safety concerns to a requirement when we opened our new building. But ultimately, our offices and classrooms were decommissioned from use by our own faculty and given to the local high schools for their use on our campus. Now, I am not against this partnership, in fact, far from it. But what I am very concerned with is the complete lack of communication, inclusive planning with faculty, and just plain lack of professional courtesy. Why isn't administration notifying and appealing to its most educated resource and the most impacted? Had we been consulted earlier, we would be able to offer more in-person labs and science classes in the fall, which students need to reach their goals. This is not unique to COA. There needs to be a conversation about how our campuses are used, who we wish to serve, and how we can work together to achieve our goals. And this needs to include faculty. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. And now, we're going to go to Carl Seelbach.
Good evening. It's great to be here. Thanks for having me. Hello, Board. My name is Carl Seelbach. I'm the Carpentry Department Chair at Laney. I'm so privileged to be teaching in a part of this Oakland community. Carpentry, for over 30 years, we've worked with the city of Oakland, housing and neighborhood development, and built several homes in the community. We've collaborated with Cypress Mandela, Rebuilding Together, and Rising Sun. But I'm especially proud to be part of the CTE pipeline for getting students the living-wage jobs in this incredibly high-demand local workforce. How do we serve the community? By cutting classes. Laney has been embedded in our community, founded as a central trade school in 1927, renamed Laney Trade and Tech in 1948. This legacy is being challenged by our district's admin, many who have not been anywhere near Oakland for the past two years and making decisions jeopardizing our plight as a unique historical community college, offering CT, excuse me, programs that cannot be found anywhere else in the Bay Area. Class cuts. How are these decisions processed? Where is the transparency? How can Fall '22 class offerings be based on compromised numbers due to this pandemic? Laney faculty spent the spring lockdown and summer of 2020 creating class protocols that provide incredibly successful hands-on labs for our students, holding the Laney torch high and proud throughout the pandemic. No other college has offered face-to-face. Naturally, we had to offer fewer classes with smaller enrollments to pull this off. And now, we're being penalized because the productivity was much lower? Really? We would like the district to work with us, the Laney faculty, to redefine this metric. Does cutting classes really save money? Running some classes is costly, and not running is costly and detrimental to our mission-serving students. Canceling classes is counterproductive and a bad business decision when millions of dollars of state-of-the-art equipment remains idle. Walk through the shops like machine tech, culinary, wood tech. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Now, we're going to go to April Bankhead.
Hello. Try one more time.
Well, you were right. Now, you're muted. There you go.
Hello. My name is April Bankhead, and I just want to say thank you to everybody who's put on this nice board meeting. I know a lot of work goes on behind the scenes, and I want to recognize everybody. And thank you all so much for showing up in person, and also, that means PFT, woo-hoo. I'm sorry I missed the pizza. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I do appreciate the board giving me a few minutes to speak. I started at Laney in the year 2000 as a part-timer, and I have another colleague who started in '98 as a part-timer. We are both now tenured faculty members, and we work in the Culinary Arts Department. And I can say that we've seen a lot of ebb and flow in the enrollment numbers, but we haven't really been given any hard data that documents this really big picture since Laney first opened. You know, in terms of like, how many students were in the culinary program in 1985 versus today? How many students were in the English classes, you know, versus today? I don't see that transparency at all. I tried to ask for it, but I think that would be something to think about, I would ask you as board members. Our enrollment does ebb and flow. And in an effort to increase enrollment, which seems to be on everybody's mind, the dean and the VP at Laney have asked culinary to market our program. And my concern with that is that most of our students find out about culinary from word of mouth. They tell their friends. They tell their neighbors. They say good things about us, and that has been our whole marketing strategy. When I started in the OO's, I would call the PIO officer and ask about promoting our program, advertising it, you know, putting ads on BART or buses. You know, in 2018, about 80% of our students were homeless. And so, for the amount of time that it takes to enroll in classes, we're canceling them before students get an opportunity to finish that process. This is not an easy process. I actually challenge you guys to try and enroll as a first-time student at Laney.
Thank you, April. We're going to now need to go to Rachel Goodwin.
Hello, everybody. I'm Rachel Goodwin, and I work at College of Alameda. I am a counselor and the coordinator for our Student Accessibility Services. So I work directly with our students with disabilities. And of course, that's a huge range of students. We have students that are coming straight out of the high schools who have had IEPs and 504s. We have returning adult students who have experienced the onset of a disability. And what these students all have in common is that they are here to reach a goal, whether that's a personal, academic, or career change goal. The students are here for that purpose. And in working with students, I hear their frustration. Some of my other colleagues were quite eloquent when they were speaking about the experiences, counselor. And so I'm just going to mention that, again, priority registration began this week. It began on Monday. And I have heard frustration already from students at the fact that they do not feel that their priority registration, which is an accommodation so that students can select classes that meet their learning needs, their needs for disability accommodation because they need classes at specific times, they need to consider transportation, they need certain learning modalities. They're making these decisions at priority registration, but when those classes then get canceled, as Mary said so eloquently earlier, it's a wrecking ball. Their plan gets thrown out the window. They're left to struggle trying to find classes that will work for them. And it's really been something that students express tremendous frustration with. Just this week, I was in a classroom doing an observation, and a student asked me if they could speak with me afterwards. They came to me to speak about the fact that they had classes that were canceled at the last minute
10 seconds?
and that they were unable to get classes they needed and lost financial aid as a result. I just beg you to keep in mind our students and their needs.
Thank you, Rachel. We're now going to go to Karen Panich.
Yay, Rachel. Yay, April. I wish I was at the PFT office with everybody. I hope we can have a hybrid meeting next time. I'd like to put that out there. Also, Rose Allen has ceded her time for me, so I get double time. Okay? All right. Thank you. My name is Karen Panich. I'm a part-timer in the ESOL department at Laney. I've been a part-time employee since 2000. I spoke at the last board meeting and tried to convey the dire consequences for part-time faculty and our students if the proposed cuts are implemented. I wanted you to consider seeing what has happened at City College of San Francisco, where I was laid off along with 250 other part-time faculty at the start of the pandemic as a call to action to not let what is truly a catastrophe occur here. I challenge you to see the recovery from the pandemic as a time to build back better, make enrollment easier, for God's sake, fix the problems that have been mentioned, the barriers that so many of our students have to go through just to get a class, and instead, to grow and not shrink at a time when we know the students are there and they need our classes. With the proposed cuts and our fall schedule, only a handful of the Laney ESOL department's 20 part-timers will get 10 hours of teaching. I have a colleague with lupus who will lose her health insurance if she goes below six units, which is a very real possibility, even though she's pretty high in seniority. Since I helped create and develop our basic English non-credit program five years ago, it has been my dream to be able to offer all four levels taught each eight weeks. And in fact, I'm confident we could fill two sections of each level, one online, perhaps in the evening, and one face-to-face. We have never been able to grow to fill this need, even though we consistently fill the classes we offer. The program gives hours to seven part-time teachers. In the fall, it will probably only have hours for one full-timer and one part-timer. Instead of growing and meeting demand, we are shrinking back to two levels each eight weeks for the fall. That means our lowest-level students will have to wait six months for the appropriate level to be offered. My students' basic English Level 1 are some of the most vulnerable people in our communities. I couldn't agree more with Janelle about how the cuts and difficulties in enrolling disrespect these students who are fleeing from war, who are fleeing from poverty, who are, in fact, the most resilient people on earth. And there is just no respect for them, to make things easier for them to be able to fulfill their dreams of having an education. I would like to highlight a couple of my students' stories and how the cuts to the ESOL non-credit basic English program will affect them. Khalid, from Afghanistan, fled the war, broke his leg trying to escape to the US, now walks with a cane. His wife and three children are already here. He told me through a translator that our class is the reason he does not choose to go back to his home country. Before he started learning English, he was depressed. He was isolated. He wanted to actually return to Afghanistan. Coming to class is the highlight of his day and week. We will only be offering one Level 1 class during the day in the summer and fall. When Khalid gets a job, I hope there will be an additional evening class or online Level 1 class for students who are working. With the cuts, this will not be the case. Another student, Iman, also came fleeing war from Yemen, had never held a pencil or been in a classroom in her 47 years on this earth before she started at Laney. She will not be able to make Level 1, to take Level 1 in the summer or fall if she cannot come in person, and there's no online option. Vina, 60 years old, from Nepal, had also never been able to get an education in her home country. Igor and Galena just started my class three weeks ago. They're from Ukraine. They're 67 years old. Igor would like to start working as soon as possible. He also needs to learn English. There will be no option for him when he gets to Level 3.
10 seconds? I'm sorry?
Okay. Is that the first part or the entire time?
No, the entire, we're getting 4 minutes yet.
There are just a few of the many stories that we have. My students disappeared, and now they're coming back because it's face-to-face. So we need to offer these classes so that they can, you know, continue their education. Please have a growth mindset, not shrink at a time when our students need this. And please listen
Thank you, Karen.
Lowell, Jennifer's presentation. Thank you.
Okay, now, we'll have to go to Monica Ambalau.
Thank you so much. Greetings to the Board. My name is Monica, and I'm the Chair of Music over at Merritt College. And I'm just here to speak today about some of the class cuts, how they've affected our campus community where the arts are concerned. So in comparison to Summer 2020, for example, Music had six three-unit courses. And we currently allotted two music Excuse me? We're currently allotted two music courses for the summer. And that's a gross cut for us, right? And we're losing students. As DE Coordinator, I have a full release. And if I were to teach in the fall, there would only be two instructors running an entire music department. And so those cuts now will change the culture to our department, to our program. There's a lack of diversity now between the course offerings we have among the instructors. Students are no longer in our panel labs. We miss having them. We lost 20 regular students. There's a lack of in-person presence. We miss having students dropping in to practice, to say hi to us, to visit, to have a space where they can, you know, cultivate creativity while feeling belonging. You know, give us our classes back. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. And now, we're going to go to Kimberly King. I allowed you to talk. I'm not able to promote you to panelists. It's not allowing me to.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes. Well, I'm going to try one more time. Last time, it worked. Once I got the person to panel us.
Okay, there we go.
Work that time? Okay, great. Go ahead.
Okay, hi. Greetings, Board of Trustees, Maisha, Chancellor Jackson, and all other college district leaders. I'm Kimberly King, Faculty in Psychology and Ethnic Studies at Laney College and Coordinator of the Umoja Program there. I love Laney College because we serve some of the most diverse and hard-working students in the country. Our students are all ages, from every ethnic background, mostly BIPOC and immigrants, from many economic backgrounds, mostly working-class and poor, members of the Oakland community who want to change their lives, their communities, and the world. I speak in opposition to the class cuts that hurt students and teachers from our communities. By cutting classes, we are shrinking, Peralta, shrinking opportunity for communities who need it the most. And we're setting a precedent of shrinking that I worry could lead to the end of our colleges altogether. Why? The huge class cuts that are planned are harmful to the community and unnecessary given the state's held harmless policy that's meant to, so-called, it's meant to retain current students and reengage those who have dropped out. But instead of reaching out and instead of removing unnecessary barriers to enrollment, like, they just posted the summer classes now. Like, it's already April. Is that the best way to get enrollment? Is that the best way to get enrollment to just, I was looking for a class last week to tell people about, no classes were posted. So anyway, we have, we have funding that supports at least 200 more FTEs. Why are we cutting sections? We're laying off faculty who have donated, dedicated their life for many hours, many, many years to working with our students. So I just urge you to consider, please don't cut these classes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kimberly. Now we're going to go to Jamil Tiernan, is our last public speaker for the evening.
Good evening, members of the board, students, administrative colleagues, staff and faculty colleagues, and members of the public. It's truly exciting that the board has again gathered in this new hybrid medium that allows for a spirit of collaboration and of in-person meetings and takes into account the safety of those serving in our communities in the capacity of board members. In January, SEIU and the district entered into a side letter of agreement that outlined in part that when it came to the return of SEIU members, the district were quote-unquote, return, their campus return objective would be to be 100% effective in operations and look at staffing that was proportional, safe, and flexible in order to meet actual in-person student needs. Largely, though, what we found is that the return letters that we've seen to members have been uneven. Our members who have transitioned their work to respond to the need for virtual service are still largely serving students in that way and are now required to return to the office and still take Zoom meetings for virtual support. They are still without a comprehensive plan for transitioning virtual work back onsite. And they are literally responding to emails from students who are, who were virtually taking classes while responding to students at the counter. Staff are concerned. We want to be able to say that we've been collaborators when it comes to strategies that will best serve our students moving forward. We want to be able to say that management has discussed with us any new and growing needs for in-person service and that our commitment to shared governance has allowed us to give that feedback and make recommendations based on our experiences from the past two years of remote service, but we have not been allowed a seat at the table. Two things happened today that I think illustrate the sort of disconnect between what staff are experiencing and what's actually happening. The first is that a district classified staff meeting had staff ask, how do we get engaged? How do we join student outreach? How do we approach students at the colleges? Where is our seat at the table? Or what committee can we get involved in to be able to do that? But the second thing that happened is that Laney management canceled a meeting with staff that would have given us effective communication in terms of our experience.
Ten, I'm sorry.
It's okay. So we're asking at the end of all of this, that the thoughtfulness that has been allowed to bring the board back to meet safely, be applied equally, and the proportionality that was agreed to in January be used to make decisions when it comes to members returning into the office. Thank you all. Have a great day.
Thank you, everyone. Sorry to have to rush everyone with the two minutes in time you like that. I think we are done with public comment. We can move forward.
Thank you, Sasha and Maisha, for getting us through that. I know that we're, we're still learning in the hybrid fashion that we are here, but thank you again for bearing with us. Let's go ahead and move to 3.12, the Chancellor's report. Chancellor Jackson?
Thank you very much. I'm board president and thank to all of the comments. I was taking notes. And I, before I turn it over to the presidents for their report, I would like to say that I've been verifying some of the numbers and I strongly, I cannot say this enough, strongly encourage if you cannot be part of the hybrid, but at least to listen in, on April the 21st, we will have what we're calling an Enrollment Academy. And hopefully, we will be able to dispel some of the myths that are out there and provide some clarity on the data and the methodology with which we went forward with our class cancellations this year. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the presidents for a brief update and we will go alphabetically. So we will start with BCC and then College of Alameda and then Laney College and finally with Merritt College.
Good evening, Vice President Delphine Polk, trustees, colleagues, and community members. In addition to the Berkeley City College report that you have in your board packet, I just want to highlight two things. The first is acknowledge and thank John Nguyen, Veronica Montoya, and actually Trustee Delphine Polk for the Career Fair last week that we had at BCC. Highly engaging, we had a phenomenal speaker. It was, it was a vibrant campus. It was hybrid model and certainly, I think, had the opportunity to connect students to employers. So thank you very much, Trustee Delphine Polk, for joining us. The other is that we have commencement that's coming up in May, so we're very excited. This is still another year where we have a hybrid environment for commencement. I know that some official invitations should be coming to each and every one of you shortly, but I just want to highlight that for Berkeley City College, our virtual YouTube Live commencement will take place on Thursday, May 26th at 6:00 PM. Very grateful to my colleague here, President Johnson, and the community at Merritt College, because on Friday, May 27th, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM, Berkeley City College graduates will actually celebrate at the Merritt College campus. So we're gonna be outdoors, we're gonna be enjoying the beautiful views that Merritt College students get to enjoy on the daily, and we're really grateful for your hospitality for our students to join. There's gonna be food, music, celebration, opportunity for students to take photos and receive diploma covers, but it truly is a celebration. So if you are able to join, we certainly welcome the community and any and all to join us. And just in closing, we do have Black Student Success Week, the third annual one in the state that's taking place next week. Very proud to have Andrea Williams, our Transfer Center Coordinator, is going to be one of the panelists during next week's series. Great work that's happening across the district, certainly, and we feel honored to be included in that, knowing that on Monday, the kickoff is actually Secretary of Education Cardona is going to be kicking off Black Student Success Week. So I hope that you all are able to attend. That concludes my report for Berkeley City College. Thank you.
Excuse, excuse me. Thank you very much for the reminder. I appreciate that. So good evening, Vice President Polk, trustees, Chancellor Jackson, colleagues, and guests. I'm pleased to provide the report for College of Alameda this evening. I'd like to start by indicating that the College of Alameda sponsored or co-sponsored the Alameda State of the City event on April the 7th aboard the US Hornet. The event featured the keynote presentation by City Mayor Marilyn Ashcroft, who was there with other dignitaries and, and city staff, making presentation regarding the future and challenges and priorities of the city. I was pleased to be joined at this event by Trustee Whitrew as well as Chancellor Jackson, among other representatives of the College of Alameda community. It's important to note that this was an event that was sponsored by the Alameda Chamber of Commerce and Economic Alliance, an organization that both Trustee Whitrew and I are members. So I thank both the Chancellor as well as Trustee Whitrew for joining me at that event. So I appreciate your being there. And it was a pleasure, again, meeting you in person. Additionally, the College of Alameda is participating in the annual City of Alameda Spring Festival and Community Expo on April the 16th. COA will have a booth at the fun, family-oriented event where we will provide information about the college and engage in activities for protected students and their families. Two other points that I would like to, to make, and one is the College of Alameda Aviation Maintenance Technology Program in collaboration with the FabLab recently collaborated on AMT 76 Blade Pit propeller project to create an experiential learning opportunity for students by turning an aerodynamic design challenge into an engaging, interactive classroom experience. AMT Professor, Professor Pettyjohn, students had the opportunity to engage in designing and building and testing on propeller to better understand their concepts through this unique experiential learning opportunity. The students reported that because of this experience, their level of understanding was enhanced. I would also like to congratulate English Force Speakers of Other Language Instructor Dedem Ikicche for her publication of a new book entitled Person-to-Person Peacebuilding, Intercultural Communication, and English Language Teaching. Dr. Ikicche wrote the book with her co-authors, Amy Jo Minett and Sarah Dietrich. The book maps the, this, inclusive terrain of potential person-to-person peacebuilding as it intersects with intercultural communication and online language teaching. I applaud Dr. Ikicche and her co-authors on their outstanding scholarship. Lastly, College of Alameda has continued its creative support for advancing student success through programs and technology adoption. Here's a few recent examples. We implemented the Conex Ed Case Management Scheduling and Communication Software. It allows, this software system allows students to be connected with counselors in a more timely and more efficient way. It allows for the creation of alerts and it also integrates with Canvas and PeopleSoft. On the 13th, we launched the Wellness Day. A variety of stress-reducing activities, including healthy lunch, a DJ, yoga session, therapy dogs, among other things are going to be featured tomorrow. Additionally, we are doing a financial aid fair in which we'll be providing information about beneficial information about financial aid processes that will allow students to understand how to access these essential resources. That ends my report for this evening. Thank you for your attention.
Good evening, Chancellor Jackson, Vice President Delphine Polk, members of the governing board, colleagues in education, valued community members, and of course, our students. Within my board report tonight, you have some details about some great work we've been doing with campus tours, a fellowship that's been bestowed to our bio-manufacturing program, as well as a kind of a digest of a great innovative event, which was our packathon that our student body vice president told you about at the last meeting. But in addition to that, I would like to share some other exciting news at Laney College. Our quad is a great place where a lot of things happen, and tomorrow's no exception. From 12 to 2:00 PM, we will be having the Wellness Self-Care Fair, where student resources that include healthcare, general healthcare, dental care, mental health, pharmacy care, insurance assistance, and then substance abuse care will all be made available to our students. I would like to thank, in addition to our nurse at Laney College, Indra Tadani. I would also like to thank La Clinica de la Raza, De la Raza, and the Roots Community Health Center for their collaboration with this. Also, I'm very excited to announce that Laney College's Restoring Our Communities Program, which helps system-impacted students, was the recipient of a, from the state chancellor's office, of a three-year grant of $166,000 per year with an option at the end of the third year to continue the funding to support the program and those students. Really, with our, our rock staff, if it's Vincent Garrett or many colleagues, I also want to thank, though, the faculty coordinator, Roger Chung, as well as Associate Dean Gary Albury. Something I said actually in a meeting earlier today, grants and things like this don't happen without the above and beyond that employees put in, and this is certainly the case this time. I'd like to close my report tonight by also sharing with you some details about graduation for Laney College. It will be May 27th, both the virtual and in-person elements. The in-person will take place in the Fieldhouse parking lot, and it'll be from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and will include photo opportunities, students receiving degree covers, graduate gifts, as well as food and festivities. And then, once that is done, those who were there or those who couldn't be there can go ahead and tune into YouTube at 3:00 PM for the virtual ceremony, which will include congratulatory speeches as well as graduate slides that will be made available from the in-person event via YouTube. And with that, I'll include, I'll conclude my report for this evening.
Good evening, everyone. President Delphine Polk, feels good to say that, trustees, chancellor, community members, and colleagues. I'll start by talking about Merits, graduation festivities. On Thursday, May 26th, we're gonna hold our virtual commencement ceremony. The start time to that is still to be determined, and it's gonna be hosted in real time. But the ceremony will be broadcast on the PCCD YouTube page. So that's the virtual ceremony. The day before, we're switching it up a little bit, on the day before, Wednesday, May 25th, we are hosting the in-person graduation party, and that's going to be in Lot B that President Garcia mentioned with the billion-dollar views. We're gonna have food, music, pictures, videos, giveaways for all of our graduating students. So we invite everyone to show up to that. Next, while the final figures are not yet available for the 2122 academic year, I want to, I want to share some encouraging news, especially given some of the discourse of this evening, some encouraging news around enrollment data. So in working with our Director of Research, Nathan Pellegrin, we were able to glean some information. And the evidence shows that despite the many difficulties that were caused by COVID-19, several of our programs at Merritt College experienced significant growth during the pandemic. Enrollment in our physics department increased by 50%. The number of students in our environmental science and fire science courses grew by 57% in each of those areas. And the enrollment in our economics classes swelled by 71%. Now, there were three areas whose growth was even more prodigious in the respect of health professions and occupations, 98% increase. Library information studies enrollment increased by 173%. And our educational technology program, an amazing 251% increase in enrollment. So I think as these figures demonstrate, it's absolutely possible to attract new students to programs despite the challenges of the pandemic. In closing, I want everyone to know, and you're all invited, April 27th, save the date, we're gonna be hosting our classified appreciation, classified employee appreciation barbecue. And that's up at the, we're calling it the, the Landscape Horticulture Gardens. That's where that, you know, the old land, the Land Hort Building. April 27th, 11 o'clock. And I just gotta say that at Merritt College, we're very fortunate to have the professional classified staff, members that we do. And this, this event is really meant to convey our gratitude. And while everyone's wonderful, one individual who I think represents the dedication, resourcefulness, and compassion of our classified professionals is Ms. Denise Woodward. So I'd just like to say a couple of words about, about Denise. Her dean, Chris Foster, I think, described her best when she said that Denise shows a sincere interest in the student staff and faculty that she works with, and because of this, she's a great listener, powerful speaker, and a talented and skilled staff assistant. On a bit of a personal note, I have to add that a few years ago, Ms. Woodward was exceedingly patient and long-suffering dealing with the new administrator at Merritt who was trying to find his way. So I owe a debt to her. So thank you, Denise, and all the other classified professional staff members that we have for doing what you do. We appreciate your service and dedication to the college. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, President. I do.
I do have another good bit of news, so thank you for starting that, Dr. Johnson. The presidents and I put together a letter of interest to the Institutional Effectiveness Partnership Program, known as IEPi. And they provide funding up to $200,000 for new initiatives to improve institutional effectiveness. We collaborated and put forward a plan to provide a district-wide training center, something we've been talking about since the fall semester. And it would be a joint collaborative with the colleges and also with our colleagues, both our students, our classified professionals, and our faculty. So pulling in the Professional Development and Learning Center, and that was going to be the name PLDC or PDLC. It's getting late, so I'm getting a little dyslexic. But I just want to thank the president, and I want to thank those colleagues who provided that input for that during my listening sessions in the fall, especially our classified professionals who indicated that we don't really have a lot of things for onboarding. We don't have consistent training, established standards. And as we move forward with implementing PeopleSoft 9.2, we want to make sure that we don't lose that momentum and we train the trainers and then move forward with continued professional development. So this will help us launch that. We're looking forward to that this summer so that it can become active in the fall semester. So that concludes our briefings, and thank you very much.
Thank you all. Let's go ahead and move to presentations, 4.1 Merit College Athletic Department. Are we ready to go?
I'm ready.
Great. Hello. Thank you.
Hi.
Let's go ahead and get started. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much, Board Trustees, Chancellor, Presidents, and community. Proud to be here and here to speak about the Merit College Athletic Program and the Track and Field Program as an example of one of our great programs at Merit. So just a brief bit about me. I practiced law in downtown Oakland for about a decade before catching on at Merit. I represented kids removed from the home for abuse or neglect or their parents seeking to regain parental rights. I also represented kids and adults accused of criminal conduct. And when I changed careers and moved up to the jewel on the hill that is Merit College, I moved from a place of hopelessness and pain to a place where hope lives and dreams flourish and powerful change happens. Because I feel incredibly fortunate to work at Merit College and have the opportunity I have to work with the students of Merit and Peralta. In 2004, I began coaching in the Track and Field Program, and I became head coach in 2006. And then, in the fall of 2018, I began as athletic director at Merit. So in the Track and Field Program, we've never been satisfied with just the on-the-track performance. Success for me is defined by students graduating and either transferring or moving into a career if that was their interest. During the pandemic, in Track and Field, we've graduated or transferred 17 students. And since 2008, our students have also accepted over $2 million in athletic scholarships. So when I became athletic director, I tried to use my experiences in Track and Field to move more generally to our whole department. So in this first slide, I wanted to reflect that we've transformed our department by focusing on a more systematic operational approach so that when we bring students into our program, our students' needs and goals are defined and addressed from the first moment. When we talk about guided pathways, athletics is a model program for bringing in students through outreach, helping them enter the path, building relationships to keep them on the path, and actively assisting our students in moving on to the next level of their education or career and ensuring learning. This second slide, our mission statement, I think speaks for itself. We live it daily at practice, on campus, and in the community. We believe the character traits developed in sport are transferable to the real world. And I just want to thank the board and the chancellor and the presidents for allowing us to be on campus since the fall of 2020. This has been a really challenging time for our students, as we've heard earlier in the public segment. And for our student athletes, the opportunity to be on campus has been hard to define. Our students have been so happy to have the opportunity to interact with each other and their coaches and to maintain a sort of semblance of a real college experience in these last two years, and it's really helped them to be successful in the classroom. Slides three, three and four is just the next slide. This is just from the BI tool. When, prior to when I started as athletic director, our census was fairly consistent around 170. And our productivity was always strong. In the next slide, the more recent years, our product, our census has grown in 1819, from 207 to 270, 267, and this year, 232. And our productivity, we've been the most productive of athletic programs in the Peralta District, eight of the last nine years. In the picture on the bottom left, there's our President Johnson with Roy Caldwell, who was the track and field coach at Merit from 1969 to 1971. It's a little bit of history for us. He came and visited and brought books and books full of articles and pictures from the olden days and how successful Merritt Track has been over the past 60 years. And moving on to slide five, this is just a brief overview of our budget. Everything, including salaries and benefits, and it shows some effective reduction from when I started in 2018 to where we're at now. And we've been consistent the last couple of years at a reduced budget from when I first started by about 100K. In slide six, just wanted to mention the Student-Centered Funding Formula. I think we're the perfect program for demonstrating what the SCIF envisions. Pictures of our basketball gym, which is a beautiful facility. And the next slide, I just want to speak briefly about the SCIF for us. This is, I think this picture, these pictures demonstrate our demographics visually that we represent traditionally underserved students of color. These are students we seek to support and close the achievement gap for. They're the students of, that we identified in student success and equity as students who need additional support and high touch. And that's what we do in athletics. We build relationships with our students. And we see our students through from outreach initially, bringing them to campus, to building those bonds and relationships on campus so that we can retain them and move them through the path to graduation and transfer. The next slide, just some of the elements of the SCIF formula that I think are really relevant to athletics. Again, student success and equity. Most of our students, it's a rare case that our students don't receive a Pell Grant and/or a Promise Grant. And all our student athletes, if they want to transfer, and most do, they have to pass transfer-level math and English. So all our student athletes are in those programs and need, and understand the need to pass those classes in order to move on to the next level. Again, with degrees and transfer, that's our goal as a department, is we want our students not only to be successful on the track or the field or the court, but to ultimately have academic success and find value in their educational academic pursuit. Almost done here, three more slides, and then I have two speakers. So the next slide, just to demonstrate some of the digital approach we've taken, is that we've posted a QR code on our website with an athletics application. It's 37 questions that all our incoming student athletes fill out. It helps us to initially gather data to identify student needs right from day one so that we can help our students direct them, whether they're foster care, previous foster care children, or if they're interested in Puente or San Kofa Care, Cal Works, some categorical program, we can identify that early on and make the referrals. And the next slide, we've catered to our student athletes through student athlete orientation that not only has information about the college and how to navigate the processes at the college, but also is sort of student-athlete-centered so that we build a connection and an interest from our student athletes. And lastly, we've made an athletics canvas shell. All our student athletes are in a canvas shell so that we can communicate through Canvas with our student athletes all in one place. And it's a catch-all for student information and digital access so that our students always have a place to go if they have any questions, other than simply asking me or their coaches. And so that's the slide presentation. And now I just have a couple of speakers that I wanted to introduce. And this is our Track and Field Program. I have a current student and an alumni, and I think they're here. Let me see. Just want to make sure. Okay, Ricky is ready. So the first speaker, current student, is Ricky Townsend. I just thought I would introduce him a little bit. He's an exceptional person. Ricky has a 3.76 GPA that includes physics, chemistry, trigonometry, and calculus. Those classes always impressed me because I didn't, I avoided them at all costs. But he's expressed his goal to become a commercial airline pilot, and he was accepted into the Aviation Management Program at San Jose State for the fall of 2022. He's going to graduate in May with a degree in natural sciences. Ricky's a tutor at the Merit Learning Center for students taking English 1, English 1B, English 1A, English 1B, English 5. Basically, he's an English department tutor. He shares responsibility for the care of his grandfather. And he didn't want me really to, he allows me to say this now, but he literally works when available as a superhero at parties. He dresses as characters, which I think is pretty interesting. He's a leader on the track team, and he runs the 800 meters. And I just want to say, when you see the videos that I send out of him racing, that's the tip of the iceberg for the amount of preparation it takes to be prepared for competition. So I just wanted to introduce Ricky so that he could talk about his experiences in the track program and at Merit College. You're up, Ricky.
Oh, nice. Well, yeah, my name's Ricky. And my experience with track program has been overall just great. I could give you like a whole list of like, eye track is such a great sport. But if I only did that, I'd only be telling half the story. And what I mean by this is that there's like a lot of things that has to happen before we even set foot on the track to compete. And one of the main reasons why we're able to be so successful is Brock Treason himself. There's always this thing that, or there's this saying that coaches do more than what they're supposed to do. But what I can say for a fact is that Brock goes like up to the moon and back for each and every one of us on the team. He has helped me a lot through my college career, such as finding professors, searching through classes that I need to take, getting the right paperwork for like my FAFSA and also my FAFSA appeal. And he even helped me learn how to file my taxes, like super random thing. But I really needed it because there's these random nights because I was trying to figure out how to do taxes, and I was afraid that I was going to go to jail or something. And I would call in the middle of the night, and I was like, Brock, Brock, I need help with my taxes. And he's like, what do you mean? And I was like, they're going to knock on my door. And then he would say like, you have like way more time than you need to. We'll just do it at like closer to the due date because I think I was like five months ahead. And yeah, he helps me, he helped me calm down a lot with all of that. But anyway, yeah. And I just think that for anyone, I'm kind of like a lot to deal with. And he helps everyone out individually through the team one by one for whatever needs like they have, and he's really great for that. In short, he makes sure we're like taking care of like a family, like a big family. For me, okay, so now for like me personally. So how track benefits me is that it is like an outlet to like express myself freely and to be myself without feeling a certain way. And there's like so much different things of how it's helped me rather than like physically, because that's like one of the main obvious things that happens with track. You, you're like healthier. But one of the things that I guess you can't see immediately is that it's helped me to become more disciplined, like just throughout my life. And in short, or for examples such as like me setting up times for how long I do homework, how to manage certain things that are going on with me and to be like also more focused. And it also gave me like a new ability of like creating short-term goals and long-term goals. And another thing too is when I first started at Merit specifically, I was very, I was very much like a quiet person. And I kept to myself like a good percentage of the time because I was very shy. And I think what's happened over time is that I became like more social because of the people like coming in and through the track, mostly just staying in. And it's just allowed me to motivate myself to be more outgoing and not stay within myself, if that makes sense. And yeah, the main reason is just like my teammates, like they really helped me to to not only be better for the events that I do, but also just about being myself and not being afraid to show it. But yeah, that's all I have to say. Track or the merit program is a really good program and I would like to see more people there because I think it can help a lot more people than they think. Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricky. I appreciate that. You have to say that and it was only because you didn't have your W twos yet and we couldn't do the taxes. Thank you so much for coming on, Ricky. Devon Wilson Angel, our 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 last speaker, just two speakers. I would like to have everybody come speak. But Devon graduated a decade ago in two thousand twelve. Can you believe that? And he had a social behavioral science degree. He took third place in at the state championship in the one ten high hurdles that year and received All American status. He transferred to Long Beach State where he majored in sociology. He won two Big West championships in the one ten hurdles. Devon met his wife at Long Beach and now works for the city of Portland in emergency management. And he just accepted a job at Adventure County for a similar position. So he's coming back to California, which we're really happy about. Devon was a leader at Merit and like so many of our alumni, he he takes us up on our open invitation to come back and spread his knowledge and experience. So welcome Devon.
All right, is this good now? Yeah, great. Thank you, Brock, for inviting me and thank you to the board for allowing me to have a chance to speak you speak to you guys about my experience in Merit. Overall, I I love Merit. That's like I went to Long Beach State and it definitely was my dream school, but Merit, every time I go up to the track and visit it, I I literally get chills because of just just how great it was. So so I graduated in two thousand twelve, but I actually graduated high school in two thousand nine. And that first year after high school, I was kind of just moseying around like a lot of kids do and really didn't know what I was going to do with my life. And I ran track in high school and I was I was pretty decent. And Brock actually talked to me at one of my high school meets, but I never really took track serious. And so sometime after a year of me just kind of not knowing what I was going to do with my life, I just happened to run into Brock and he was like, hey, come out to track practice. And I was like, all right, sure. But I came. But the main reason why I stayed was because because of the environment that was just created. As as Ricky mentioned, and I'll also echo like, practice has a very special way of really creating family. For especially for those who maybe have troubled families or for those who are just needing more of an extra push, my maybe by those peers. And that's really what this I felt the space was for me. I really didn't want to let anybody down and more importantly, I I didn't want to let Brock down because he did so much like, like Ricky said, he all of my FAFSA stuff, I didn't have to worry about, even helped me find it, found the job, that summer program. I think he's still inviting kids to actually do like a summer sports job, which was really cool. He also helps me with my taxes too. And and I'm thirty. So he he's he's done a lot. He's done a lot for me and even even now I've never lost track of being in communication with Brock. Like every every accomplishment, every small thing that I do in life, he knows. Or I talk to talk to him about it or ask for his help. And that's that's really the environment that he created around 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 Merit, which I was very appreciative to have that experience because I honestly, I don't know where I would be if I didn't have someone like Brock to like just actually push me and actually be able to hold me accountable. And that that's probably was the biggest thing that I needed at that time was for someone to say, hey, you're being it. You're you're being a jerk or you need to go to class because you said you want to set these goals and I'm going to hold you accountable to those to those goals. And he still does that to this day. And I know within the merit pro, uh, merit athletics as a whole, I'm happy to see him as the direct athletic director because I know he's he'll bring those values to not just merit track athletes who definitely benefited from those, but all the athletes got to get a chance to actually share in that experience and share in that that sort of wholesomeness of of cohesion and family, which which I know for sure he she he shares with them. And overall, I Brock is just a very passionate person and he's a very driven person. And now in being a a working adult and being in the work field and around other adults, you don't see that. And especially in in my field of work, you you just don't see that. A lot of people just do what they have to do and go home, but Brock does. He he goes above and beyond and he's literally worth his weight in gold. If, yeah, and yeah, so I'm definitely happy to be coming back to California. I always joke with Brock and say like, hey, you need to find me a job at Merit. Definitely want to move back and work at Merit. Because I really did appreciate my time and experience that I had there and not just Brock, but the teachers that I professors that I had a chance to interact with, a lot of them were incredible. I don't think I've had one bad experience with with professors and and a lot of their teachings and lessons are very lasting and actually really did prepare me for for the next level when I went to Long Beach State and was able to continue on with my education. So again, I'd like to thank you all for your time. Brock, thank you for inviting me to speak. And yeah, you all have a great night.
Thank you very much. What impressive young men. Yeah, love you guys. Thank you so much, board and everyone, community for hearing us today.
I think we have some, I want to open up to my colleagues. Thank you so much, everyone who spoke. And I want to open up to colleagues who want to say a few words.
I just want, oh, I'm sorry. No, no, you're first, trustee.
Thank you so much for that wonderful presentation. Often the stories probably about the last four or five years, often the stories about this district are about the board, the infighting and our troubling behavior. And I'm so happy to hear these stories. Brock tapping into the holistic needs of students and helping them do their taxes and the wraparound services that our students in this district need to be successful. Really happy to hear about it. I'm happy to hear about how your census is growing, how the athletic program is growing, even though in enrollment is declining. And so one, keep up the good work. Two, tell us how you're doing it. And then I have a question for Devon. At thirty years old, can you still run fast? That's it.
I actually, was it last year or two years ago, I came down to the track and I tried to do a workout and I was sore for like three days. So I can run. It comes at a cost now.
So that means you're thirty. Okay.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins. Go ahead, chancellor.
I was just gonna say, thank you, thank you, and thank you so much. I think we need to hear from our students and from our great faculty, coach. I was on the athletic commission for eight years. And I know that our our faculty and our coaching staff in particular go above and beyond every day. And so to see the success, not only the short term success, but the long term success with Devon and just it it warms my heart. And and it brings tears to my eyes because it's the things that why we do what we do is because of you guys. So thank you so much. Thank you, coach. I gave you short notice to pull this together and you did a great job. So two thumbs up.
Anyone else want to make any comments? I want to open it up to our colleagues online as well. Maisha, Sasha.
We have student trustee Cooper who raised their hand first.
Go ahead, student trustee.
Yes, um, thank you very much. Thank you so much, Ricky Townsend and Devon Wilson Angel for showing up to share your experience, experiences. It is such an important and influential way to shape your future, shape the future for those following in your footsteps. And I wanted to thank Coach Drayson, Drayson from the bottom of my heart. For for all that I hear folks, for our students, there have been just far too few times that I've had the the honor of seeing folks show up side by side and speak with students or or even step aside as you did and empower our voices to be heard. I have the deepest respect for that that earnest and genuine dedication. Y'all, all three set an incredible example for your colleagues, students, and faculty alike. And I can only pray that more of them will follow suit. Whether identifying issues needing fixed or celebrating successes we need to further invest in. I I'd argue that we need your voices right now as you brought them today more than anything. Thank you so much.
Thank you, student trustee Cooper. Unless there are more comments or questions, we can go ahead and move on. Thank you so much again for speaking to us. We can go on, go ahead and move on to, we're skipping.
A point of order.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Trustee Ewan had a comment as well.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, please go ahead, trustee Goncalves one.
Thank you. Coach, amazing work. And one of the things that I really just want to highlight about your presentation was the longevity of the work. I think you get, you don't come and think things are going to change in a year or two years. It really takes a career of digging in, figuring out how things work, how to do much better at your art, how to get better at working with students and understanding their needs. And it's just so clear, coach, that that you get that. I think we saw tonight so many of your colleagues exhibiting that same kind of dedication in a different realm, but really with the focus on how do we make this place run? And I just, you know, Ricky, Devon, thank you so much also just for showing up, hanging in and investing in yourselves because that takes some longevity, some perseverance as well. And and it's just really come through. It's a it's a kind of a a perfect example of what happens when we dig in, we stick around, we do the work that needs to be done. So, coach, really, congratulations and thank you so much. Ricky Devon, thank you so much for for making us proud of our community. So that was it, Deanna. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're all set.
Great, thank you so much. We'll go ahead. We're not looking at five point one. We're going to go straight to six point one. Twenty twenty two classified employee of the year awards. I believe Andrea Epps is with us to present that and say a few words.
Hello. Good evening, board, chancellor, presidents and community. This evening I have the honor of presenting Renee Rivas, a former admissions and record supervisor in Laney for the classified employee of the year award. As mentioned earlier during tonight's board meeting by Terrence Fisher, Renee was a Peralta employee for over thirty six years and unfortunately passed away in August twenty twenty. We would like to honor him with the recommendation for our classified employee of the year. And I would also encourage everyone to look at what's contained in the board packet in terms of additional things that are being done within the Laney community to honor his memory.
Thank you so much. Do we have anything else on this? Okay, great. Six point two, first read of the resource allocation model. We have, I believe, someone to make a presentation, chancellor.
Yes, we do. And while CM comes to perform his presentation to the board, I'd like to just give a little bit of context. CM's been working with the district, I think, for about eighteen months. This is not something that is new. Started out being the budget allocation model. That it was decided that it really is a resource allocation model. So he's going to present the work that he's been working with the district to create this model, following on the lines of the SCIF. And so he will present that. That resource allocation is kind of at the end of the budget process. The other thing that he'll be presenting is what we feel is the beginning of the budget process, which is a budget philosophy. What is missing is what is in the middle from starting with the philosophy and actually getting to a resource allocation model. So over the next several months, he will be working with the district to complete phase two of this process that was started eighteen months ago to shore up some of the gaps in our processes using our existing infrastructure such as our participatory governance committees, our technology committee, our education committee, our facilities committee, et cetera. And working with us so that we can have a model because the goal is that we will implement this next year in our budget cycle. So we need to get from a beginning of a philosophy. We've already got the end and so we need to fill out the middle. So we will be coming back to the board with the recommendation for phase two of this. But tonight he will be giving you the overview or kind of the the consultative process that's taken place for the last eighteen months to to come up with this model. And CM, if you're out there, if we could go to your presentation.
Would you like me to share the screen, CM, or do you want to do it yourself?
No, you can you can share it. That's fine. So it can give me a little bit more time for to focus on what I would like to talk about it rather than in the screen. I appreciate that. Maisha, I do appreciate. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Dr. Jackson. I do appreciate for giving me this opportunity. I know it is a later part of the evening, so I will be more more succinct about exactly what this presentation is and what we are trying to do. Most of the board or people in in the audience are maybe fully aware of it that in two thousand eighteen nineteen was the first year that the state of California have moved away from the SB three sixty one, providing the funding to the all community colleges from FTE model only sits in 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 the classroom to a more student center funding formula model. Based on that one, all colleges are being provided the funding since eighteen nineteen onwards. And along the way, they have made some changes as the changes were needed from time to time. And what we, what I have a pleasure to work with through the participatory govern governing various committee structure, you know, including the chancellor's work work group, participatory governance committee, PBC, and also the offshoot from the PBC was the budget allocation model task force. So I I have a really, really good understanding of the challenges the Peralta Community College District is facing. But along the way, some of the challenges need to be identified. And while we are developing the budget allocation model at the same time, this model is going to be, if everything goes well as we have planned, it will be implemented for twenty three, twenty four fiscal year. So we are kind of ready with the budget philosophy. We have developed the called resource allocation model for the colleges and the district. We just need to do the phase two part. So if I can go to the next slide, then it will identify. So this is, this is what our budget philosophy is for the Peralta Community College District. And each participatory, you know, governance committee have looked at it. And again, this is a first reading. We are open for any suggestion from the board to be inclusive into the budget philosophy. But as you can see, the primary focus for the budget philosophy has everything to do with the educational program to support the success of our students. That's our primary goal. And we wanted to make sure that when we develop the budget, that it best align resources with the student achievement goal. Our ultimate goal is all our dollar will be where the students' achievement will be able to, uh, to accomplish via colleges and at the district level. At the same time, the budget will also include all facets of student experience who, which will lead to the student's success. We will make sure that a budget will also reduce the achievement gap by supporting a diversity, equity, access and inclusion in all our programs. So we also wanted to make sure that each college reflect the prioritization and allocation of expenditure that align with each college's goal. Peralta District have each four colleges, each represent very unique circumstances of what kind of program they would like to offer for the community. We just heard the fantastic presentation from Athletic Director Brock Drazen. In a true sense, Athletic Director Drazen really understood how to take the student-centered funding formula to the next level and helping the student to be a more, be successful. And as, as long as we can find a way to do that, I think some of our challenges will go away eventually because students will start returning to the college because colleges are helping them to be a successful. We also wanted to make sure that as a phase two part, the integrated long-term planning bring into the budgeting throughout the district, district office, district-wide services and all the four colleges. We also wanted to make sure that the planning and institutional goals serve the overarching guide for decision-making. The resource allocation to be supported also from the Peralta Board of Trustees. So we are all in together. The board support is needed, college support is needed, faculty support is needed and a classified staff support needed, needed and all the managers and a dean's support is needed. So in order for us to be a successful, at the Peralta Community College District and its colleges, this budget philosophy will provide guiding light exactly why we exist in the first place. Why this budget is so important to us in order to help the students and the community to be successful. The next slide. The next slide is we have worked through the budget allocation model committee. That, that's the name we have provided when we started the working as a BAM task force. And we have looked at every single principle that we would like to incorporate it. We wanted to make sure this guiding principle will be helpful to develop a new allocation model now and it will retain for quite a few years and it will be tweaked from time to time. It has to be remain fair, equitable and transparent. And when we using the word transparent, I'm going to stretch it a little further. We would like to make sure through the transparency, we develop a trusting relationship among the colleagues. So the people will be able to sit across from each other and talk about the issue rather than hiding behind and just to be a critical about it. So transparency, we would like to make sure that it will bring the more trusting relationship throughout the entire district. We also wanted to make sure the goals and the priorities for the student's success, equity and access is articulated every step of the way because that is the vision for success's goal. We wanted to make sure that vision for success is kind of throughout our budget process and it will help at, at the same time. We also wanted to talk about operational structural balance. We wanted to make sure that we always provide the balanced budget to the board. We wanted to make sure when we're talking about the balanced budget means ongoing revenue equal ongoing expenses. We would not like to see that we will have a deficit spending year after year after year because those kind of practices will certainly will cause a tremendous amount of problem for the colleges to offer those programs and the district as well. The next slide is the continuous as a principle. We also put those principles and at the same time, the colleges have, my apology for the, there is a small error. It should read as a five percent of the previous year's expenditure. The colleges also, from the president's perspective, they would like to do the budget development, the colleges, and they would like to maintain five percent of reserve for each college for themselves because they are also going through an enormous amount of changes at the college level, including the pandemic and including returning back. We also wanted to make sure that this allocation model will be assessed annually, I mean annually, not manually, annually. The BAM bill maintains the faculty obligation requirement. BAM bill also maintains the fifty percent law. That means every unrestricted dollar that Peralta District will get, fifty percent of that money minimum need to be spent in the classroom. We also wanted to make sure that we maintain the, our seventy-five, twenty-five ratio. We also would like to make sure that at least minimum funding be provided for FTES, FTF ratio to achieve classroom efficiency. We also would like to make sure the best way of maintaining it that our staffing cost can be manageable between eighty-five and eighty-seven percent. Whenever the district spend more than those dollars in their salaries and benefits, the district does not have enough money to provide new programs. District does not have enough money to maintain their facilities at the up-to-date. And at the same time, does not have enough money if there is a hiccup at the economy level or at the state level. So when you are working with a very thin margin year after year, and if you're but currently Peralta is spending enormous amount of ma- money for salaries and benefit. I just want you to know that. You may have the numbers, but we are slightly greater than ninety percent of our dollars they spend for salaries and benefit. The last one encourages cooperation among and between the colleges and the district office. So it is not like a silo effect like each college is standing alone by themselves. But at the same time, we need to make sure that there's enough cooperation among the colleges in terms of what we are offering in the classes, what kind of student services and how we can find a way to trim costs to seek fiscal stability within the district. So these are well-crafted principles developed in order for us to do the resource allocation model and also how to manage the expenditure going forward. The next slide. The ne- next slide is a general outline of exactly how this current budget is kind of looking at it. We have a district. Peralta Community College District is a sub-chapter of state of California. Peralta District is the recipient of all the property taxes and they are the one who consider as a legal authority to work side by side with the state and the community. Each college is a part of the Peralta Community College District and each college is accredited in order for them to offer the certificates or a transfer or a degree. When we do the budget development on the left-hand side is called a phase one. It is considered as all the revenues under student-centered funding formula, other state revenues like the lottery, mandated costs and the local revenue. The local revenues are all remain at the college's level. All the revenue generated at the college is considered as a local. So those are valid identified. The resource allocation are already completed by, by each college right now. The one which is a phase two on the right-hand side, which is all the expenditure. Academic salaries, classified manager salaries, benefits, book supply. We know where, how we are spending the money. We need to go through the exercise of phase two. Do we have enough expenditure or do we have a better knowledge of what our expenditure are at each segment, whether it is the district office, whether it is at each colleges and whether within each college, each wing has been provided enough resources for them to provide services to the students, whether it is in a classroom or student services or managing the, all the buildings and grounds at each colleges. So that's the part that we need to be working on as a phase two going forward. We also recommend the two small bullet at the bottom, which is considered as a in order to balance our budget of year after year, we, district will not be able to use the prior year ending balance in order to maintain their fiscal stability. One time, ending balance is a one-time dollars. You cannot use it for your ongoing expenses. Otherwise, it will consider as a deficit spending because you are spending more money on, from ongoing revenue to the expenditure part. We also want to be mindful about the board policy because you have the board policy of ten percent reserve for contingency for the district. And we wanted to make sure that reserve for contingency will be maintained no matter what at any given time in order for the contin- for reserve for contingency purposes. So this is overall where the budget is. Now we will be talking about each component part of it. So the next slide. So this is where we are breaking down the revenue part of it. When we're talking about the student-centered funding formula, the seventy percent of the money come to the each college based on what they generate in terms of the FTES or given the money for the base part of the allocation to open the doors at each, each college. The twenty percent of the dollar will provided in terms of who you are serving. Basically, it is considered as a supplemental allocation and it is an access. The ten percent of the money will come who you are helping to be a successful. So now there is some kind of accountability for com- for community colleges that this is how the funding will come to the Peralta Community College District. Seventy percent for the FTS, twenty percent for the students who are coming as the access, low-income students and a ten percent for success per allocation. Now with the Peralta District's demographics, you have a significant amount of population who can be easily qualified for your supplemental allocation. Your supplemental allocation percentages are greater than twenty percent because you are serving those students in your community. The second, second uh, is other state revenue. The other state revenue will also, will make up for the lottery, mandated costs and all other state revenue comes. And we are not talking about categorical program here. We are only talking about unrestricted general fund because each categorical program comes with their own conditions and own requirement what they can do with those funds. So we are only talking about unrestricted general fund revenue. The local revenues are all revenue generated at the college. The transcript fee, parking fees, uh, we're talking about parking fines or non-resident tuition fee or the rental income for the colleges building to be rented to, for, for the nonprofit or for-profit corporate corporation. So this is how all revenues are made up for the Peralta Community College District going forward. So next slide, please. So now we're talking about how this revenue allocation model is being designed. What, how the, where the money is coming from and how those all revenues are coming. So all revenues unrestricted general fund are coming to received by the district because all revenues come to the district first. But they are being generated earned by colleges because they are the one who are serving the college students. They are the one who are helping them to have access. They are the one who are helping them to be a successful. So as you can see, all the revenues come to four colleges, Merritt, Laney, Alameda and Berkeley City College. Then what they do is agreed upon the percentage. Not right now, but because whatever, however we doing the budget all this year, the first dollar is provided for the district services. So now rather than the four entity, under the new resource allocation model, there will be a five entity. Four colleges will pay to the district services for the services is offered or facilitated by the district office. And including the district office, those five entity will pay for the district-wide expenses. District-wide expenses are such which is called expenses for the retirees, accent, expenses for insurance, expenses for workers' compensation in general. All those expenses comes under the district-wide. So four colleges and the district services has to share those expenses of the district-wide based on exactly what their revenue structure is. This is how the resource allocation model is being designed in a way that it can help us understand the first that dollars are for the colleges, then the district office, then the district-wide services. Next slide. These are the different components of the student-centered funding formula. You have heard me before when I have made the presentation. Maybe a couple of board members are new incoming, they may not have. But this is a more breakdown of what the seventy percent of the day's allocation is. All the dollar for credit FTS, non-credit FTS, CDCP, career development and college preparation, incarcerated and special admin. So those are the seventy percent. Supplemental is all the students the colleges are serving who are the recipient of the Pell Grant, Promise Grant or AB five forty grant. Those dollars come directly to the district based on which college served, which population and how much. Student success is for all this eight different components. Associate degree, transfer, credit certificate, nine plus CTU unit, transfer level math and English or achieved regional living wage. This is how the entire student-centered funding formula is made up at the chancellor's office and applied to all the colleges across the board regardless of their status, whether they are basic aid district or non-basic aid district. All calculations do take place based on a student-centered funding formula. All requirements for all the district to submit the three eleven, fifty percent law, faculty obligation number, they're all applied to all the district across the board. Next slide, please. This is the detail of what the other state fund is made out. Lottery, faculty compensation, mandated cost, faculty hiring and parity money, homeowner tax relief. So those are all other state dollars comes to the colleges in order for them to make it up. The local revenues, the way it is defined and designed in a resource allocation model, local revenues will stay with the colleges. Where whoever is serving, who, whoever is serving these students and however they receive the money, this gives them enough incentive to each college to do better in order for them to improve their revenue structure. They can serve more non-resident student, they can rent more facilities, they can do a better job of, you know, managing their funds a- across the board and they can keep all those local revenues at the college level. This is at one time, it is considered as a more incentive for each college to do better in a future year. Next slide, please. So this slide is telling, uh, telling us all exactly where we are. In order for us to have the complete, as Dr. Jackson have explained, we already have the budget philosophy. We also have developed the resource allocation model. So we know where our resources are, how they are. We have provided you with the first reading as a draft for the booklet itself, which is completed. The booklet was completed in a November. The booklet was completed in November of twenty one. But because we have to go through the transparency input from each go- you know, governance model, which is BAM task force, P B C, P G C, chancellor's work group. So we wanted to make sure that we have enough discussion, enough participation. And also we open up as a transparency that this is not being done in a corner by a group of people, but there's enough discussion is taking place. I did have an honor to go to the colleges, whichever the college have asked me to come on board, including academic senator Laney College to present them with a draft uh for the resource allocation model. Phase two is expenditure, which is the biggest challenge for four colleges and the district office. We all know where the resources are, easy to quantify, easy to find out how the resource is being allocated. The difficulty difficulty is trying to understand where is the expenditure? How we are spending the money? Are we providing the enough resources to the certain department or all the department or not? So it will be five different entity that need to be looked upon for colleges and a district office. The district office does not have any F T S. So district office have the administrative structure and the district will be entertaining exactly what services they are providing it, how they are providing it, what kind of staffing level they have. And they will be asked a tremendous amount of question and query, how they are helping the colleges. So the colleges can do better job of serving the students and the community. So each entity and each each department will be held accountable for going through the exercise for the phase two for the expenditure. We are hoping to start this month. Hopefully, if if we are able to wrap it up by the December of twenty twenty two, it will be l- lot of work because there is a five different entity. Each one has their own way of managing it. But we know that if we are able to bring it back to the board for a formal approval by in December, early part January, before the governor's budget comes for twenty-three, twenty-four, then the Peralta District not only will know exactly where their resources are and where their expenditure are, but they will be able to do the budget development very openly, transparently and with a trust with each other to develop the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And quite a few challenges that we are facing will be addressed along the way. What it is needed is the support from the Board of Trustees to see that we would like to embark upon the phase two. We also need a full support from the chancellor and a college president to make sure that they are not only available but supportive of the people to come and talk about it and be held responsible for the conversation. The biggest challenge that we we will be facing is engagement with the stakeholder in the college and the district participation process. Because majority of the time, the my experience is telling me the people do be a part of the committee. But when it comes for them to perform as a committee member, sometimes the communication need to take place upward and downward. If you are participating, then it means you are representing some department, some organization, some group of people. You owe it to them to seek their input when you are representing on the committee. So we wanted to make sure that every stakeholder at each college of every committee that they fully understand that this is the most important process for Peralta District to engage upon in order for us to be a fiscally stable and not go through the challenging times for last five, seven years the Peralta District is facing. It will also require to have availability of accurate and timely data from all the operations. And we will facilitate that. We'll be asking some tough question. And again, my apology upfront, some of the conversation may not be as comfortable conversation. But unless you put it on the table, we will never be able to find out exactly how we are spending the money. So we will be asking those question to the to the colleges and the stakeholders. There will be no individual conversation. It will be more to do with a data-driven conversation. The data will speak by itself regardless of who is in the department or who is running the department. It will be more data-driven conversation. And sometime data may look good on you or data may not look good on you. But that doesn't mean we are not willing to make a changes of how we do the business at Peralta District. So with that, I'll open for any question you may have.
Sasha, do we have any hands raised on Zoom?
I don't see any as of right now.
Trustee human has his hand raised. That's all I see.
Go ahead, trustee Gonzales.
I'm happy to defer to others first.
There's no one else at this moment, sir.
All right. Thank you. Uh CM, that was really uh very helpful. And I think what's even more helpful, sir, is the work that went into it. That is, from all the reports that I've heard, the process involved in working this through has been very intensive, on the ground, very inclusive, et cetera. And that's hard to do at Peralta. It's hard to do anywhere. It's hard to do at Peralta. So, you know, congratulations on that. Um I've been around the district long enough to know that the original budget allocation model was needed because of a gross mistress m- mal-distribution of resources among the colleges. There were some colleges that were just like way more funded, had a lot more resources per student, per activity than other colleges. And it seems as though over the decade and a half that we've been working this BAM, that that problem has mostly gone away. And that the current problem that we might have is that disproportionate share has been going to the district office and increasing. And so like looking at examining, does that make sense? Or does it not make sense? How do we allocate resources where they're going to be best used? And I think that's kind of our challenge. I think you said that perhaps the most challenging part was going to be figuring out how to get appropriate effective input from the share stakeholders. And I think that's always our problem at Peralta. It's a problem in every community college district in the state, of course. But I think it's also a problem that we share. And I think it's a structural problem. It's not a question of personalities like, oh, so-and-so is power hungry and won't share. I think it's just built into the structure. For example, with students, they turn over so often, it's challenging to figure out how to train and pipeline those students so that they can functionally participate in a knowledgeable and representative way. I think similarly for classified employees and it's if it's not part of their paid job or part-time faculty, if it's not part of their paid job, then we're asking them to do it for free. And that's not tenable. Um so I think you've got your challenge there and I'm I'm eager to see how the task force resolves that challenge. I think resolving that challenge is in and of itself probably a critical component of coming up with an effective BAM formula. Because as you say, it's going to be evaluated on an annual basis. Unless you have those effective inputs to say, yes, this is working on the ground here in A and R at Merritt College, or this is working really well in athletics at Laney College. Um then we won't really know. So thank you for that. There are two other things that I wanted to just raise for thought. One is that when we look at student success and equity, I think we're often not measuring the correct thing. We're looking at like persistence rates and pass rates. But what we're not looking at is something as basic as how many hours of time does a student study? What is their capacity to study? We're not asking that question. And because we're not asking that question, we're very often not getting to a good answer about why do we get inequitable outcomes? If student A has 10 hours a week to put into a class and student B just doesn't have that time because they've got all these other obligations. We need to know that. And we know that our target students, the ones who are disproportionately negatively impacted in general, don't have as much time and resource to invest in their learning. We need to understand that and address it. But we're not even studying it except for occasionally looking at housing or food and food insecurity. But that basic metric of time invested in learning, I think, is really critical. The other thing that we're not looking at, at least not systematically, is we're not doing functional audits. I think my colleague trustee Withrow would be really fascinated on this question. We do all sorts of studies, but when we look at who's doing what, we're not looking at whether it's being done by at the appropriate level. Our instinct is often to hire another manager. And this isn't a diss on managers. It's a it's a diss on a mindset that says, that doesn't ask the question, at what level? Who should be doing what piece of work? And I think unless we address that also, we're going to have a hard time coming up with a BAM that actually works. Because increasing portions of budgets are going sometimes to places where the the outcome just, it's not designed to work. You could put in a bunch of money into those areas, but it's just not functional. And maybe you need a classified worker to be doing that for somebody on release time, especially given the high turnover rate of administrators. Anyway, I I'm fascinated by the work you're doing. I'm really grateful for it. And I look forward to the board engaging at a deep policy level on these on these critical questions. So thank you very much and thank you for your patience, colleagues and and friends.
That's all. I I do appreciate your comment. Uh let me give you a couple of clarification to the your comment uh from my perspective. What we are going to be working at is if if the phase two is going to be started working on it, we will be working at each colleges, first of all. So it's not like let's put everything in a one box and just shake it up and see what happened. No. We respectfully will be working with the president and their cabinet and their committee structure and see exactly what are the challenges each college is facing. So then we fully understand that how unique each college. Berkeley City College does not have grounds. Merritt have a beautiful grounds. Laney have a lot of C T E program. So each college is unique in a way that what their needs are. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, as you have brought it up in in and others have brought it up, and I've been hearing this for a long time, that how come it is always costing us more and more and more for district office? And I say, okay, rather than just asking it costing us more and more and more, we will be asking question differently. Exactly what services you are providing and what level you are providing the services and exactly what are the staffing level you have, because everything in our business is measurable. Everything is measurable. It doesn't matter which job it is. Every job is a measurable job. And when we see the anomaly in everything, so every department out there, then we can raise the question and say, wait a minute. In order for you to process 50,000 purchase order a year, you need X amount of staffing level. Now you got 55, you still don't need additional staffing until you get into the si- sixty thousand level. Those are the points. So what we are going to do is basically asking the question is something called quantifiable, measurable, some kind of demarcation for each services out there. Then and then we will know exactly, either we do have a problem with a system problem or do we have a problem with the skill sets? You can have a you can have a system problem so bad that students are not able to register. So you have to handheld them and you need a so many people to help them to just to get registered. But if your system is working so thoroughly that they can register without any heat or anything, then you don't have to put more money into that part of it. So we really need to know exactly where the hiccups are in the operational side of the house. And as I have mentioned in my presentation, when Peralta District is constantly spending more than 90 cents on a dollar, you don't have enough dollar to maintain things. You don't have enough dollar to maintain your facilities or you don't have enough dollar to provide the good support services. So we really wanted to know who is eating up this large chunk of money and where they are eating it up and not providing the accountability of those dollars. It doesn't matter where. It could be at the college, it could be at the district office or it could be somewhere that we have not even looked at it ever. So this is kind of looking under the every single stone to figure it out what your needs are and why. I'm not asking question what you need there. I will be asking, why do you need it? Show us what your needs are, not needs are, but why do you need it? And how you going to serve the students? How you are going to serve the community? And each person in Peralta District will be asking the question like a athletic director Brock. He fully understood student center funding formula. He made it to work for him so well that he knew exactly who he is serving. How many students have the Pell? How many student need help to fill up the F A C S A form? How many student need to be a transfer? He understood that. And that's what we really need to take it to that next level where every person will say, okay, I'm here. What am I? What am I contributing? I'm I'm a Peralta family member. What am I contributing? Faculty member, managers, classified staff, everything. So now the conversation will be more open, transparent and trusting because we want it put on the table. We don't want to hide behind anything. Maybe maybe what we will find out, we may not like it. I'm sorry to say that. But unless we try, it's just not going to work. It did work. It is not working all along. We have lost, we have lost. I'm sorry to say that. People may not have the data. We lost eight thousand full-time equivalent student in Peralta District from the height. District is declining nine years in a row, not because of pandemic.
Well, I I think that one of those stones that we need to overturn and look under is our basic model of how we're seeking productivity. And I I I think paradoxically, what we need to be questioning is this notion of uh productivity and efficiency. Uh Lowell Bennett earlier tonight spoke and and spent some time, you know, looking at his work on on productivity. And it's a little paradoxical. I'm not sure that the model that we've got chasing that kind of productivity is actually a workable model. And I think we need to just maybe begin to treat it a little bit like a shibboleth that m- maybe it's it's this urban myth that you have to do it that way. Now, I don't know the answer, but I think if we don't ask the question as you're asking, we'll never get there. Anyway, thank you very much. I've taken enough of the board's time.
I I appreciate that. And the last comment is, and that's why we call community colleges, we offer comprehensively. And that's the reason we can have 12 student in nursing class, but I cannot afford to have only 12 student in accounting class because we have to find a way to have average class size for the each college and within the district which we can manage financially.
Thank you so much. Is there, I want to leave some time for other colleagues who want to
Please.
make any comments or have any questions. Sasha, is there anyone on Zoom?
Oh, man.
Okay. Thank you so much, CM. We appreciate your work.
Thank you very much.
Um let's go ahead and go to six point three chancellor, the review of administrative procedures.
Unless there's any questions, um our policy in the district is that uh board policies come to the board for approval and administrative procedures are just vetted so that the board is aware of them. There is no requirement for so that the board is aware of them. There is no requirement for vote on that. So I am here if there's any questions on the administrative procedures that have been submitted for your review.
Any questions? Sasha?
I see no hand. Oh, trustee Ewan has his hand up.
It's just a procedural thing. Are the administrative procedures, I'm I'm not seeing strike-throughs and additions. Normally, what we get is we get a strike-through in addition to know what's new and not. And these just then, because they're completely clean documents, look like they're all completely brand new. But I don't think that's the case.
Chancellor?
I cannot address that at this time. I believe that they were reviewed and that if there were changes, they were documented. But I don't recall any major changes to the ones other than that some of them were outdated. And so language was changed. But if you don't have the strike-throughs, I thought that you did. So we can
I would request that they just, they come back in some form so the board can see
We can bring them back. The board doesn't vote on it anyway, so it's no problem to bring it back. And so I would just make note that we we do that. That's really been facilitated by Dr. Belinski. And I don't think he's changed his process, so I'm not sure why you don't have it in that form.
Chancellor, I'm sorry, that that would be me, Chancellor. Because what happens when it comes to editing processes, when it comes to fixing the forms, the whole formatting from Word to PDF and the highlighting. So what tends to happen is I, for this, for me to ended up cleaning them up ahead of time and putting it on because when I post it and send out the announcements the next day, it's a lot less so I can go ahead and keep them with the strike-through next time. Trustee Ewan, not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sasha.
No problem.
Okay, looks like we're ready to move on to the consent calendar. Can I hear a motion?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Great. We get a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Was that trustee Whitrow or Jenkins that made the motion in the second?
I think Kevin's in a hurry to get out of here tonight.
So Jenkins was the motion and Ewan was the second?
Yes.
Thank you. Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper? Student trustee Cooper, you there? So trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla, absent. Trustee Delton Pope?
Yes.
Trustee Nafali Bellarys? Motion passes.
Great. Thank you so much, everyone. Let's go ahead and go to 11.1 Action Items, Consider Ratification Between PCCD and CBIZ Benefits and Insurance Services. Chancellor, do you want to speak to this since we don't have Dr. McKinley?
I'll just move approval.
Okay, thank you so much, trustee Whitrow, and then second from let's have a roll call.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper? Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Delton Pope?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks very much. Let's go ahead and go to trustee reports. Trustee Jenkins, since you're on my right.
I'll be very brief. It's great to be here in person for the first time. I learned where the bathroom was, literally. But excellent to see all my colleagues here. Happy to be here and look forward to continuing and improving on this hybrid model. Thanks so much.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins. Trustee Whitrow?
Pass.
Okay, trustee Handy?
Pass.
Trustee Gonzales, one?
I just want to thank people for turning out tonight and sharing so much of their passion for the district. And to thank the very many people involved in this district who make it work. I also want to note that it's not clear to me that moving to an in-person setting is necessarily creating more access or more accountability for this board. I think that our classified employee, well, I won't go into detail because that's a discussion that should probably be agendized. But thank those of you who made tonight work in its imperfection. There was a lot of work making it work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to open it up to our student trustees. Do we have any of our student trustees who want to speak?
Yes, ma'am. We have student trustee Cooper.
Go ahead, student trustee Cooper.
I apologize. My Wi-Fi dropped out for a moment there. I I just logged back in. Where are we at? What if I may be missing?
Trustee reports. If you have a report now is the time.
We were already past the consent calendar.
That is correct.
Oh, that was fast. I'll just report for the record that I really don't like voting on consent items as one giant mess. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll be very brief. Thank you very much, President Garcia. I was able to speak at the Berkeley City College Career Fair the other day. It was a very rewarding experience. I think the students really enjoyed it, and it was great to be in community with the students in Berkeley. And then one last thing before we adjourn. I did speak earlier this afternoon for the National Center for the Study of Collective Bargaining in Higher Education and the Professions Conference put together by the City University of New York Hunter College. And I want to thank President Jennifer Shonoski for the invite to come and speak on pay parity for our workers here at Peralta. It's a very proud thing to be able to represent a district in that respect. So thank you again, President Shonoski. And that ends my report, and I believe we have some announcements.
Yes, 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 yes. Reminder to all students, please vote in the student elections that are happening at all four colleges with voting opening today and tomorrow, April 12th and 13th. In addition to electing student representatives, this vote includes the proposition to offer Easy Pass from AC Transit. So please remember to vote. Remember to vote. Every vote matters. For more information, visit the Peralta website at pralta.edu/student-resources/student-government. Please join us at Laney College for June Steingardt's Art Gallery for a reception on Wednesday, April 13th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. honoring the artist of the shimmer exhibit, which features work of art about water and environmental awareness. The shimmer exhibit runs through May 9th at Laney College. Make sure you goodbye to check it out. Announcement number three, a reminder to Peralta employees. The PeopleSoft Finance and Human Resources websites will be down from 5:00 p.m. Friday to April 15th, April 15th through 8:00 a.m. Monday, April 18th. So IT can move our new HR and finance modules into live production. Note that Campus Solutions PeopleSoft for Students is not affected by this planned downtime. So students with early registration rights can continue enrolling over the weekend. Open enrollment for summer and fall '22 classes will begin Monday, 18th. And last announcement, the next meeting of the Board of Trustees will be Tuesday, April 26, 2022. That concludes the announcements.
Just a
Chancellor?
I I just had a comment. The board is having a special study session on April the 24th, 21st, excuse me, at 4:00 p.m. We'll start at 4:00 p.m. And we will also be conducting our EEO training at that time. So for those of you that are still out there, please, it is going to be an enrollment academy as well as the board will get some training, but we'll do the enrollment academy first for those that would like to attend. Since there was so much discussion tonight, I really think it would be important for us to have a baseline understanding, especially as we move forward with the implementation of our budget allocation model and our resource allocation model. Thank you.
Great. Shall we adjourn? Yes. So we are adjourned.
Have a great night.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, everyone.